Pilsbury, Counsel Fornier, Counsel Lawrence.
Here.
Counsel Daniele.
Here.
And the Chair, Dan Pilch, is here. And that's all we have at the moment. I know Counsel Egan is excused. Counsel Bradley may show up later. First things first, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which was founded on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of our marathon meeting 04-23, held on February 28, 2023, for five hours, and to accept the minutes that Chris has prepared for us as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence. Thank you, Counsel Fornier. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes as printed?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention from Counsel Daniele, so it carries four to zero to one. Moving right along, I have a few announcements. I've got four announcements tonight. Freeport Community Library has a terrific lineup of programs in March and April, but I'm not going to read them all tonight, so please make sure you follow them on Facebook or head to their website and sign up for their monthly newsletter. Second, there will be no in-person financial transactions, like registrations, or tax payments, or licenses, or permits, on March 9th due to a system upgrade. You can still conduct business online for most things at FreeportMaine.com. Apologies for the inconvenience. Next up, Freeport has started working on a climate action plan. To learn more about the project or to sign up for project updates, visit the project website at FreeportClimateAction.org. And lastly, but importantly, the town of Freeport is always seeking volunteers for all municipal boards and committees. In particular, we will have a vacancy coming up on the Project Review Board, which is the board that reviews development proposals in Freeport. If you have an interest and/or experience in planning, construction, development, engineering, architecture, landscape architecture, and/or historic preservation, and are interested in applying, please fill out an application. Those are all the announcements that I have. Any other councilors have announcements to make? Seeing none, we'll move on to information exchange. Any councilors have information to exchange about goings-on in the last couple of weeks?
It seems like we were only here last week.
It feels like it. Yeah, Counsel Fornier.
Not sure if this is the proper place for it or not. I had a concerned citizen call about a fire hydrant down on South Freeport Road that's been out of service for nine months. So I said, that's something we can check out. If it has been nine months, hopefully that will get addressed. So I'll let Peter check into that, and maybe that gets fixed, so.
I was just going to go sit down.
Is that something, Paul, that you're up to speed on, that you can update or can add them as?
I can address them.
Okay.
Sorry, Paul.
Yeah, take it.
Great news. I received that same call last week, reached out to the Water District, and they had the work scheduled for today to replace that hydrant, so.
Thanks.
That's what I'm told, so.
So since we're in budget season, counting nickels, I know we pay $135 per month per hydrant. Seems all we ought to adjust our bill a little bit. Just saying.
I won't put Paul in the spot. I'll talk with him after the meeting. Yeah. I think you had one or two that you were concerned about, right, Paul, that had been out of service?
Yes.
That you can make a list of how long they've been out of service and give it to me or Adam, and we'll forward it to the water company for...
Well, me.
Either not just replacement, but adjustment. Yeah, you can go ahead, Paul, if you'd like. Rebate, I think, was the word I was looking for.
Rebate's fine. You know, just, you know, because we do pay a pretty good fee for those.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about, you said nine months was the complaint you received?
Correct. According to the gentleman that called me, yeah.
Okay, so that's over $1,000. That's not chump change.
No. Then I've addressed this. I mean, you know, Adam got, you know, that call and so forth with that one down there that we spoke about earlier, the one outside the station is, and I got the phone call from the area superintendent, and that's going to be addressed right off. I've had a pretty candid conversation with our superintendent on this, and basically I'll go on record saying I don't like getting phone calls that I can't control. And basically, it goes back onto the Water District. And again, I was on to him about hydrant shoveling, so it's just something that we've got to keep a close eye on with them. So I've been, you know, trying to have regular conversations with the superintendent of this area and getting those things scheduled and taken care of. But it has been many months of aggravation.
Thank you, Chief.
Did you have something else, Counsel, or is that just the one?
No, I think if a rebate is in order, and that'd be awesome.
Any other items of information exchange? Looks like you're up, Mr. Manager, for your report, Town Manager's Report.
With none of my materials in front of me. I do have... It's okay. That's where I was going to get, but don't worry about it.
We can come back if you...
No, it's okay. I've got two items. So from our planning department, we are, our town planner is on Zoom, but not here in person. We are happy to announce that the town of Freeport, but also jointly with the town of Yarmouth, hired Mehdi Smith of Cumberland as our shared grant-funded sustainability coordinator. And as we discussed, that's about a 15, 16-month position, so it'll be for the entirety of the next fiscal year and part of this current fiscal year as well. Mehdi's been working in the private sector. She worked as a consultant on the development of municipal climate action plans across the United States, so this is something she's got experience on. She's very enthusiastic. She's going to be joining us full-time starting on... But she will be involved, I think, doing some night meetings and getting up to speed with both of the sustainability committees for the next month and a half as we get closer to that date. So you may run into her at the sustainability meetings, either in person or over Zoom. And those are, ours are, I believe, twice monthly, and Yarmouth is a little bit more frequently than that. So we're pretty excited. I know that that's in addition to another great pickup that we had. We've got our police chief here, but our new mental health liaison position, and I know you've renamed that since we did the hiring, so I just butchered that, but... Which I think our council chair reported on at the last meeting. So two new additions, kind of key specialist-type positions for the town moving forward that we're both excited to have onboard.
One of which is entirely grant-funded for the next year.
That is correct. And just last but not least, want to thank overnight the snow removal. I know that our buildings and grounds crew and public works crew for the past month, and anybody else that works in property maintenance and snow removal can attest that everyone's been out running ragged for last week and the beginning of, and over the weekend into the beginning of this week. So they did a great job. I was a little excited and a little disappointed that the roads were clear and almost dry at 4:00 p.m. on Saturday as the snow just stopped coming down. So I went out and I was like, wow, this means I can still have to go do what I was going to do this afternoon, and I thought I was going to get a snow day out of it, but unfortunately I didn't. But thanks to our crew that was out all weekend and the beginning of the middle half of last week, sorry, not the beginning, the middle half of the... That's all I've got right now, Mr. Chair. We've got a million things that we'll be talking about that probably the updates are more appropriate in those items, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions for the manager? Moving right along.
Right back.
Yep. Our next order of business is our public comment period. For those of you that are new to this, this is a time when the public can comment on items that are not already on our agenda. So if you see something on the agenda, I'd ask you to hold your comments until we get to that item, and then there'll be opportunity to speak then. If what you want to talk to us about is not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. We limit everybody's time to three minutes in the interest of fairness, and it's not a time for back and forth of questioning the council or debating the council, but it's more just a time to kind of tell us what's on your mind. So with that, sir, welcome. Tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name's Art Dießinger. I live at 7 Buttercup Drive, Freeport, Maine. I was here at the council meeting on January 3rd to talk about a lighting nuisance ordinance. The gentleman here on the board said that they would get right back to us, keep us, because we had complained about bad communications. Unfortunately, that didn't correct itself. They still had not got back to us, so my neighbor, who is also involved, finally sent an email to the town manager, and he informed us that they were having a meeting with an attorney two weeks prior to his emailing her, and that he was going to call, find out what the outcome, and get back to us on that. And that was on February 27th. And to date, until we walked in tonight, we had not heard anything again. Basically, I just want to keep this in front of the council. It has not been resolved. We need this ordinance desperately because it's actually escalating. The gentleman in question is, I'm going to say, not healthy. I'll put it that way to be kind. So anything you guys can do? I know that Peter said that he was going to try to get in contact, get some more information. All we ask is to be kept in loop. You know, if you go to the attorney, just say, we went to the attorney, we're going to wait to hear from her, give us two or three weeks. Fine. We would not be here. You just don't shut us out. I mean, that's not, to me, a good way to do business. You know, keep us in the loop. We are residents. We pay taxes here. We try our best to do things right. We would appreciate the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we've been trying to get in touch with the attorney, and it's on us for not getting back to you to let you know that, so we'll do a better job of that for sure.
I just sent out an email and closed the loop with them, and John as well, for some requests that they had in addition to that, so you guys see a copy of that, so.
Thank you.
Email John Rye, and when we hear, I'm expecting this week, when we hear something back. We already contacted twice, so if we don't, then I'll be as angry as you are, so.
As soon as we hear something, you'll...
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I think the copy can go, they had requested, I don't know if they said this before I came back in the room, but they had requested to look at a copy of the ordinance, so we'll see that before you guys will, I think, so.
Or at the same time as you will.
Got it. Yeah, makes sense, yeah. Yep, and I see that there's at least four of you here that probably have similar thoughts on the matter, so I appreciate you all coming out. So we'll work to get this resolved hopefully soon. Is there, I'm guessing there's nobody else in the room who wants to offer public comment, but if there is, you're welcome to come up to the podium.
Sure.
Is there anybody on Zoom who has a hand up for public comment?
I do not, and I do not yet have Counsel Bradley on Zoom, so.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further public comment pending, we'll move on to our seventh order of business, where we take action on things. First of which is item 34-23 regarding our consent agenda, which tonight has on it a number of donations from very generous residents and friends of the library, and I assume this should say donations to fire rescue. It says "library" twice, but I assume item 40-23 is for...
It says "library" twice, isn't it?
Okay, because it says to consider action relatives to fire rescue for item 40-23. It says both fire rescue and library in the same one. Are they all library items?
Thirty-nine.
No, the second one is fire rescue, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The second one is fire rescue. So the donations to the library and donations to the fire rescue.
Starting with Patty.
Patty.
And ending with Barb and Ron for the library.
For the fire rescue.
Yeah.
Yep. And then also some awards from a trust fund to individuals, as well as appointing our clerk as registrar of voters for two years. Got it. Anybody have any reason why any of these items should be considered separately rather than together as a consent agenda item? Seeing none, Counsel Pilsbury, you want to move the consent agenda?
Be it ordered that the March 7, 2023 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence. Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda? That's everybody, so that gets past five to zero. Next up is 35-22 regarding our proposed capital program for fiscal year 2024. This is just for scheduling a public hearing for April 4th to discuss the program. So it doesn't look like a lot of discussion at this point in the agenda regarding the program, but for now, we're just scheduling the public hearing. Anything we need to know other than we're scheduling a public hearing?
Nope. It's just allowing us enough time to get the notices posted.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Counsel Fornier, you want to make that?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be scheduled for April 4, 2023, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the proposed capital program for FY2024.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence. Seeing that there's no further discussion, all in favor of a public hearing? Looks like five to zero by my count, so that passes as well.
Because Ed's on, do we have to do this?
He hasn't showed up yet.
Oh.
We're waiting for him to show up. But when he does, yes, we will have to do roll call, yep.
I thought you said he was on.
If he, yeah.
I wasn't expecting he asked for Zooming today, but...
Mm-hmm. Though if he showed up for other business, we won't have any votes after that, most likely. Next is item 36-23 regarding an agreement with the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District for stormwater-related education and outreach. This looks like it does have some background on it that our town engineer is waiting to give us.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Adam Bliss. I serve as your town engineer. Nothing real controversial about this contract agreement, but there is one discussion item that we should focus on. The town has worked with Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District for 20 years now for stormwater-related services. The town has a permit from the DEP to discharge stormwater runoff into, from our storm drain system into streams, wetlands, the ocean, et cetera. It's a very prescriptive format. It's quite lengthy. There are heavy fines if we don't comply. The town has done a great job complying with that permit to date. Two items out of that permit are public education and outreach, and they're quite lengthy and involved. The town has partnered with 13 other greater Portland municipalities, USM, NSMCC, and Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District to fulfill those permit requirements, public education and outreach. The agreement is a five-year agreement with a 12-month advance notice opt-out clause. So in other words, if we want to opt out of the agreement and we sign the agreement, we have to give 12 months' notice. The delicacy of that 12-month notice is we have to find funds to pay for that continuing period of time. So what it boils down to is, I don't know if binding future councils is the right phrase, but the appropriation of dollars for those services is not guaranteed each year. It carries over, but it could be eliminated. Maybe there's a financial crisis, maybe, you know, pick a scenario. So there's the, again, the agreement is not controversial. It's that opt-out clause that is kind of a sticking point. I will say that the other 13 municipalities, USM and NSMCC, have signed the agreement. We did reach out for their kind of thoughts about this 12-month notice. It does not appear, it's raised a lot of alarms. When we negotiated the agreement with Cumberland County, we did have them reduce it from 18 months to 12 months, and that's where we're at. I think I'll take a pause, maybe let that sink in. Peter, if you want to chime in, or I'm happy to field questions from you guys. But basically, we're asking council to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement that contains that 12-month advance notice clause.
Is this replacing a similar agreement with similar terms?
Yeah. Yeah, the principal difference being instead of an 18-month notice, it's 12-month.
So there was a five-year contract with an 18-month notice, and that five-year period is ending. Now we're starting a new five-year period, largely the same contract, except that we reduced it from 18 to 12.
Correct.
How much is the contract for? I don't see that in here.
It changes year to year, but last year's number was about $11,000. We're under a new permit with many more requirements, so that number will go up about 5% for the We're negotiating those services right now with them.
So the budget is, the only thing I'll add is the budget for this unit is set by the 13 Izzywood communities, so we all have the same motivation, which is not to spend a ton of money doing this. It's, I wouldn't say, I almost said afterthought. It's a side component of most of the stormwater stuff that we're doing, all of the municipalities. So there's a lot of hard infrastructure work and projects and things like that that are going on that Adam's working on. This is the soft public awareness, public education component, which all the municipalities together contract with this group to do. So it's the much smaller proportion of stormwater than the big, actual projects that we're doing on a regular basis that are required by our permit, as well as the inspections that you do. Seven or nine separate other MCNs in addition to these two.
Four others, and within those four is through, you know, it's a lot.
These are two of the control measures. Adam is responsible for four that are much more in-depth. These are kind of two of the minor ones that are contracted.
Yeah. Yep.
Do we also have questions? All right. Counsel Lawrence, you want to read this motion?
Sure.
Be it ordered that the town council authorize a town manager to sign an agreement with the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District for stormwater-related public education and outreach services.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Daniele. We have Counsel Bradley has joined us, and I believe wants to speak on the matter or ask a question. Counsel Bradley can hear us?
I can. I just wanted to let you know I was here. Thanks, I have no questions.
Okay.
We're only getting your eyes in also.
Yeah, if you want to tilt your camera down a little bit, that'll be helpful.
Me?
Yeah, we're kind of seeing you from just your eyes, like you're looking over the fence.
Like Kilroy. There you go.
Wilson from Tiltop.
Thank you.
Since we have a council remote, we're now obligated to do roll call for our votes. We only have this one and one more. If there's no other discussion, we can go down the line, starting with Counsel Pilsbury.
Aye.
Counsel Fornier.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Daniele.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so that passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. No, I mean, you can sit down, but don't go anywhere tonight.
Don't leave the room.
Sorry.
Our last action item for tonight is item 37-23, to consider action relative to the fiscal year 2024 tax due dates and interest rates. I think it's something we do every year, but if you want to give us a little bit of background, from our finance director.
Sure. This is just an action to set what we will charge for interest rates on the 2024 taxes when they become due. This is set by the state, and we just have to adopt the language, as well as requesting a 0% interest on any overpayments or prepayments of taxes, so.
Any questions for our finance director? This part of the meeting is going very quickly. Counsel Daniele, you in the jackpot for longest motion to read tonight.
Be it ordered that one half of the fiscal year 2024 committed taxes for real estate be payable on November 15, 2023, with an interest at the rate of .66 per month or 8% per annum to be charged from November 16, 2023, and that the second half of the fiscal year 2024 committed taxes for real estate be payable on May 15, 2024, with interest at the rate of .66 per month or 8% per annum to be charged from May 16, 2024. Be it further ordered that the fiscal year 2024 committed taxes for the personal property, for personal property be payable on November 15, 2023, with interest at the rate of .66 per month or 8% per annum to be charged from November 16, 2023. Be it further ordered that the, that an interest rate of 0% per month or 0% per annum be established for overpayment or, and/or prepayment of taxes.
Thank you, Counsel Daniele. Thank you, Counsel Lawrence, for the second. Any further discussion from Counsel Bradley or anybody up here? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Counsel Bradley, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Counsel Pilsbury.
Aye.
Counsel Fornier.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Daniele.
Yes.
The Chair votes yes for a six-to-zero passage of item 37-23, which concludes our action item of the agenda, which tonight is probably the...
Sort of.
If only, if only.
Other business number one, I told them they didn't need to be here until 6:30 because I know, guessed that...
Yeah, she's not going to be here until almost 7:00.
Okay. We have plenty to talk about, so that's not a problem.
I told her the item would likely come up at 7:00, but they might want to get here as early as 6:30, so there's no way that they'll be here right now by our own request. That's a staff request, so don't want that to be negative towards them.
Okay. That's fine. So item number two is, might not take us all the way till 7:00, but it's an update from Brett Richardson on the sewer opportunities.
Brett Richardson, Executive Director of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. Just a quick update, as Counsel Pilch mentioned, on the sewer committee's work with the Freeport Sewer District to raise money to offset some of the sewer district's capital needs. You'll recall from presentation from Counsel Bradley that the sewer district has about a $20 million capital need, upgrades from a 50-year-old system. And we've been looking, from the town perspective, about how to offset some of that cost with the eye towards lowering connection fees to facilitate the development that we want to see from the downtown vision. So the recommendations from the committee were to move forward on some grant proposals and some joint planning. The first of those is the congressional designated spending, which is an earmark request. The original plan was for the town to put the request in. New information has come out in the last few days, quite honestly, where it makes more sense for the district to be that applicant. So that's the update tonight. There would be a $2 million ask, a $400,000 match that would be required to access that funding. So in this case, the district will be responsible for that. And the ask tonight really is just to endorse that earmark request as the town's top priority among earmarks going forward. Happy to answer, yeah.
Serving on the committee, I think the total amount we're asking for the grants, Brett, is how much again?
Total amount for this grant?
Yeah.
It's going to be $2 million for the earmark.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the important thing is, I think the committee's done a great job, and it really looks at the issue down the road of how we can protect our water, our soil, and have a functioning sewer system, which I think is important for the community. So thank you for all the work you've done in that.
Yeah, it's a good basis for collaboration going forward. There'll be more opportunities.
Sure, yeah. So do you need sort of a nod from us tonight, saying that we would sign a letter of support?
I think it would be great, yeah. It means a lot to the delegation when they know that, especially with the district being a separate entity, that the town supports us and has been collaborating with it. It's a good, strong signal of town support.
Any objections to the manager writing a letter of support for the grant? No, seeing no objections, then you'll work with Brett to do that?
I will.
Okay.
We did one. We did one last year, but we'll make it more, try to make it a little more compelling this year. I know it's more important to the district now that they've got some identified... Yes, Tom, I know my microphone was off. Now that they've got some more identified project needs, I think it'll be more important, so.
And we'll be back again with other opportunities to talk. And we'll be back again with other opportunities to talk about.
Okay. Thanks again.
And we're still exploring the other grants that were identified in the sewer program, and we may come back and ask for both council endorsement, as well as not a binding commitment, but an okay to apply if there is a future town match that may be required, correct, Brett?
That's correct.
But not for this current one, because they've identified that's not the best way to proceed.
That's correct. You know, another recommendation that the county, the committee made was that the town should look at establishing a pool of funds to subsidize projects that are a good fit and advance public benefits. So there'll be opportunities to discuss ways that the town can contribute in that way going forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Brett. And thanks to everybody on that committee for doing a lot of work to get us to what seems like no action on our part, but I know there's a lot of activity behind the scenes, so appreciate that, work being done on the sewer district's behalf and on the town's behalf, really.
Still not, except for Clark.
All right, still not seven o'clock. And item number three, which has my name next to it, I am not prepared to deliver because I have been distracted by an eight-hour meeting today, along with some other personnel matters and other things that we'll probably talk about later on this evening. So though it's just an excuse, I apologize for not having our goals ready to present, but I do have the notes from our retreat that we did some time ago, and I'll try and get those ready for our next meeting in two weeks.
So we want to do number five before we launch into what could be a 60 to 90-minute discussion. I'd hate to do that and then have the scholarship group walk in on time for their, what we told them they should be here.
Yeah, or we could pause and start, because we're doing, are we doing a department-by-department? Is that how we typically do the capital?
Capital will be typically article by article, which kind of coincides by department, but there are some discrepancies.
Okay. How about if we do that? We'll start and we'll go through a few articles, and then if we hit seven o'clock, we might decide to pause and let the scholarship folks.
I'm fine with pausing.
And give us a little break from, you know. Yeah, yeah. Good opportunity for us. Okay, so Ms. Malloy, take it away and lead us through our capital program.
All right. I can be, certainly begin the discussion for you, but I'm really looking forward to a healthy discussion from counselors on what they want to see and questions that they may have. So again, it, just to kind of quickly recap, if we look at the summary, the request before you, that was proposed last week, was 3 point, almost $3.3 million. So we're going to be going through those articles. I do have a list of changes that have come up since the initial presentation to you, and I will bring those up when we hit the articles, as we go through them, if that works for you, so that we can kind of keep on track. So.
We're going through, just to keep everybody at home on the same literal page, we're on the document that says proposed capital improvements program, 13-page document, does that sound right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So beginning with Article One, which is the police department, we have the request being for, last year we had projected for one new patrol, but we all know that we've been experiencing some significant supply chain issues and ability to get units in. So we have bumped this request to two in anticipation that there's going to be, you know, some time that it will take to get those units in. I think Chief might even be able to give us an update on the one that we budgeted for last year. I think we just had an opportunity open up to get it earlier than initially expected. So, I mean, we weren't even expecting to get the 2022 unit yet, and we're already at this point. So we're trying to hedge against some supply chain issues with, with this request. We are also looking for TASER replacement, and that ended up being a little bit of a larger ask than what we projected last year, after going out for some quotes and looking at what needed to be replaced. And there are narratives that were provided in your packets that kind of go through each of these, so I don't want to reiterate all that on you, but if you have questions, just let me know. And the final ask for the Article One under police is consideration of upgrading the Harbor Master boat. So I'll kind of pause there and see if you have any questions or comments on what's before you with this article.
Counselor Fornier.
Couple of questions, probably to the chief.
Sure.
On your vehicles, my question is, the vehicles you're replacing, what's the service life of those vehicles? And this is my angle I'm coming at. I've requested that we have a report on mileage we pay out in the town of Freeport's coming, and I'm wondering if, typically when we sell those, we used to go out to bid, and there'd be a taxi company from New York or whatever that would come up and try to buy them. And it seems though we got a lot of value bidding those out for what the vehicles were worth. And I'm wondering, number one, if in a non-emergency use, would they have, you know, you know, maybe three or four-year life expectancy to be utilized as some sort of staff vehicle in the town? And that could have potential savings in the operating budget and our fuels cost, because I think there's a number of town employees that put a lot of miles on. And in my personal opinion, I'm not sure it's fair to ask them to take their personal vehicle and go down a muddy driveway or whatever to perform the job and pay them mileage. I think we ought to be supplying a vehicle for them. So what's the, what do you think the service life is after those are retired?
So to backtrack to your first point, typically, any front, any vehicle that the council allows us to buy from year to year, if it's one or two vehicles per year, those, any new vehicle that comes online, that goes to patrol response initially. And we usually, we typically will get about three years out of that frontline vehicle. At that point, the mileage is up around 120,000 to 130,000 mile. Well, 120 is the cap. We don't like to run a patrol vehicle over 120,000 miles, because at that point, you start having a lot of maintenance issues. So if we can get the car off the road by 120,000 miles and then relegated to detective position, a spare car, school resource officer, lieutenant, it can still be used to respond to incidents, but it's not being driven in a hard, hard-use capacity 24/7. We ask a lot of the frontline patrol vehicles, and we have four of those. And we try to rotate. I think we have a pretty good system going right now where we get a lot of mileage in use out of the frontline vehicles before they're relegated to a secondary role. And then typically after that, the mileage drops way off. So if the first three years in a cruiser's life, you, we may see anywhere from 30,000 to 50,000 miles, depending on what we have for periphery, peripheral issues going on. If we have cruisers that are being fixed, the mileage rolls up faster. If we have to use them more, it rolls up faster. But first three years, they're going to get 30,000, 40,000 miles on them a year. And then once they're relegated to a backup role or an administrative role, that number will drop to between 5,000 and 7,000 a year. So then we can prolong the life of that car. Most of our secondary vehicles are 2015 to 17 right now. And we don't have too many, too, too many issues with that, because other than oil, gas, brake pads every couple of years, they don't need a lot of extra, once they're on an administrative capacity, they don't need a lot of upkeep. But the frontline ones, those, those are the ones that go over with a fine-tooth comb to make sure they're up to speed. This year, and to your second point, normally, we would ask dealers for a quote for vehicles that are coming off the secondary line. So last year, we ended up trading in a vehicle, and we got the most money I've ever witnessed us getting in, for a trade. Normally, we would get between $500 and $1,200 for a trade-in, because by the time they've reached a 10-year life, in civilian miles, it would be between 400,000 and 600,000 miles on a car. So now we have engine meters in the cars, dealers look at that. If it's over X amount of idle hours, they don't want to touch it. We were fortunate to get the fire, the prior trade quote just before COVID, sorry, in the middle of COVID, so they needed used vehicles. They lamented, after they made delivery, the dealer was not happy that it, you know, it took almost 18 months to get that truck online. So they were unhappy with the quote they gave us 14 months before, as it was about double what they would have given us today. So in this request, I'm asking to keep one of the, one of our secondary administrative cars to be used in the capacity of our new alternative response position. We, the position's only been online for about two weeks now, and already the, our caseworker is doing an amazing job picking people up, giving them rides to shelters and to treatment centers and to rehab, and back and forth to hotels and to meet with housing authorities in the midcoast area. And I can see a real need for keeping our cars a few more years after the secondary life to be used in this capacity. So that's why I'd like permission to keep one of those vehicles to be used in that, in that role. Yeah.
But you expect to have two rolling out of service?
Ultimately.
What's that?
Ultimately, it would just be one, because we're going to keep one for the alternative response position.
So to get to Counselor, Counselor Fornier's question was, are one of, would, what would be available, and what condition would it be in? Because I think part of the discussion during the budget process, we're going to look through the mileage and see if, we'll have to weigh the, what we would get for your one vehicle if we sold it on the market versus the potential savings and convenience of keeping one for a staff car.
Yeah.
Really be for the administrative departments, mostly at Town Hall. But there may be some other people who would use it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What did you, what was the, the high quote that we got for the one that they weren't thrilled about?
They gave us $7,000 with our last trade.
You're saying about half of that is probably likely moving forward?
I think if the market holds the way it is, I think that would be a fair number. Prior to that, we traditionally used to keep cars a little longer, but it would yield almost nothing on the, on the trade-in. So we were getting between 5,000 to 500,000 maybe, usually around $500.
So I think we can, we could use 3,500 as a high number to do that analysis.
Yeah.
I've got one more question before you go away.
Sure.
And it's probably not a surprise, but we've talked a lot at the Police Advisory Committee meeting about a new police station. We, I've been on a couple of tours with you and your staff, kind of going through the facilities, and we've got a memo that was sent to us from the Police Advisory Committee, kind of outlining here a bunch of reasons why they were in support of us starting to plan for a new station or an expansion of the existing station. And I was hoping that we'd see money in this year's budget for the study of that, the planning of that. But I don't see it in the budget. Do you, is that something that you didn't request, or is that a question for Jessica?
Yeah, no, I have not made that request.
Okay. Would you support the request, I guess, is?
I'm sorry, I was reading on something. Well, I'm sorry, say one more time what the request was. I was.
It would be for, for planning purposes, architecture, studying what the needs are.
Public safety facility.
Oh, the public safety facility, yes. So that actually is part of the list of proposed changes that has not been, I think you have a copy of it potentially, but I didn't point it out yet, because I was actually going to look to pull it out of potentially another, I was going to bring it up during the building, the BMR article, which is seven, I think, under municipal facilities is where I was going to bring that up, versus the police reserves.
It's not in there, but she's.
Oh, it's not in here, but you're going to bring it up later. So, so ask the question later on when we get to Article Seven. Okay.
Yeah.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, we were, the question had been asked, we're at the preliminary stages, probably this is as early as we could put it into the five-year plan. I might have held off until next year, but it's probably good if we make an amendment after the fact and put it in this year for the planning. I think we'll be able to expend those funds within the next calendar year, but it might take until FY '25? Beginning of FY '25, end of FY '24, beginning of FY '25. So Jessica developed a proposal that we'll talk.
We'll talk about Article Seven.
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough. Any other questions on the Article One, police department? Yeah, Counselor Daniele.
So it was 15,000 was the projection, and then 50,000 is the proposed for the TASERS. Are you going to buy all of them at once, or would you, as they break, buy them?
We've, we've looked into, we can, we can break it down in multiple scenarios. So we could do them in small batches. We could do them all at once, or one at a time. It kind of depends on how, some of it's a training issue with the different models. I don't think that's too hard to overcome. The issue we have right now is about half our examples are between 12 and 15 years old, and the other half are between 6 and 10 years old. So the total amount of TASERS we have is kind of split into two groups, as far as age is concerned. So we could be, we could be open to any one of, any one of the options for, for placement.
Would there be a cost savings? Like, in the future, will the TASER's price come down? Because if we thought it was going to be 15, but now we're realizing it's a lot more, is that because of supply chain constraints, or is it just, that's the nature of TASERS now?
I believe when we were, when we, the last time we were allowed to purchase them, or when they went out to bid, the last, the last two times, we did, we did these in stages. We initially got them for free from Brunswick. So we used their, we used their old TASERS for about five years. And then, once we kind of showed a decent track record with their usage, we approached council about, I believe we were sharing them between officers. And what we found with equipment is that when you share it between multiple people, it doesn't get as well taken care of, and it doesn't get looked after as well. It may be human nature, but things like radios and equipment, if it's assigned to a person, we get a much longer life out of each item. So we had Brunswicks for about five years, and you probably remember them, they were huge, big, big old TASERS. And then as the technology got better and we were replacing units, over the course of about 10 years, we did two different installments and replaced seven or eight, and then did another replacement about five or six years, or seven years after that, eventually going to all X26 TASERS of different vintage. And right now, we have three or four that are, have issues. We've, we've been repairing them for the last, like, three years. We've been getting parts and kind of cobbling them together, and displays break, and we've, TASER's been good with replacing some items. We've had to purchase a few out of our normal budget line. And then what kind of caused this to come to the forefront was we received correspondence from TASER stating that they were no longer going to support the X26 line after, I think it's June or July of 2024. So we thought we should make sure that we have it out there, so we don't end up getting stuck with a situation where we can't get replacement parts, and they're not supporting the product anymore, or that particular product.
Does a 50 represent the entire fleet replacement?
Yeah, that, that actually entails several weeks of instructor training, all the equipment, all the cartridges, full replacement, every item needed. There would be nothing else needed if, you know, if that was, that would be like the total package price for everything. If we, you know, did half the, the number, ostensibly, that number would be half of the total cost.
Darryl, are you done?
Does TASER offer a lease purchase agreement?
They do. Yeah, they, in the packets that we put together, they have a yearly, I think they do a five-year program, where you can take the total amount, break it down over, it's like buying a car. You know, they do, they'll do a term of five years, and you can pay them $700, $800 for, per year for five years. And same with the, they have a warranty as well that lasts for about five years.
So sometimes it's better to lease, whether it's computers or whatever. This is something to discuss if you have. So would you be better served if we leased purchase? Would it be a better warranty? Would it give you better service and keep us up to date with more newer technology, as opposed to buying everything now? And then it'd be great for a year or two, and then we run out of the.
Yeah, I apologize. I may have misspoke. When I heard you say lease, my brain went right to financing.
Oh, no.
So we, they don't actually have a lease option where, it's actually kind of a neat idea, where we could actually trade in after seven or eight, 10 years and get newer equipment.
They don't.
They, they just have a financing plan that they'll do. And we're seeing that a lot with a lot of companies though. They try, actually try to steer us to financing them over five or six years.
Of course.
Because they make more money.
Yeah.
They make 10% or 8% on top of them.
Yeah, and we, I've gone over all this with Jessica, just to talk about some of the different plans and she's been really a great help to me, understanding some of the reasons why some of these are good or not great ideas. So we're definitely looking at those options.
On another note, do either of you know when we last replaced the Harbor Master boat? I thought it wasn't that long ago.
I think it was, I think the current boat is a 2006.
I think so. I think we did a motor.
But the motor is a 2016.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's a quarter.
Motor's eight years old.
Yeah, the motor's about eight years old.
Or seven.
So are we selling the old boat if we get a new one? No, Jake's going to keep it?
Well.
For fire rescue?
Yeah, no, I, I think it makes sense to, I, there's talk about repurposing it, I believe.
Yeah, in the narrative, we talked about the, making a combined effort from a public safety standpoint to have the existing unit be used as a hybrid between departments for equipment, mobility, like out to the islands or water rescues when you need.
Yeah.
I hope I'm saying this correctly for you.
Yeah, we wanted to have a boat, some of the issues we run into with fire and EMS is that when we occasionally do have to go out in the water or out to Boston's, the boat, the current configuration of the boat doesn't lend itself well to putting rescue and fire equipment and gear in it. So when we end up do, having to use the Marine Warden's boat, it's not conducive to getting a couple stretchers and personnel and their equipment and their trauma packs on the boat. So when we started looking at replacing the boat a few years ago, Charlie Tetrow ended up meeting with some of Chief Conley's staff, trying to come up with a way that we could roll needs of the police and, you know, conservation in with fire EMS. So when we do, did spec out a boat, we could kind of cover, get a boat that would cover all needs. Because I thought that would be a much better use of.
Specifically, I asked this question to Jessica, I think it made it back to you, but maybe it didn't and came back up. The boat that, the existing boat is not a, is not in failure, correct? It's functional.
Yes.
It's getting quite old, but it's still workable. But the main issue, at least that what I've heard about, I believe, is that you don't have room to treat somebody or transport somebody laying down. Is that a fair assessment that when they have medical, you don't have the ability to transport somebody on a stretcher and get care, even at a slow rate of speed, just because of the dimensions of the boat, right? I mean, there's not four, there's not six foot clear anywhere on the deck of that boat. It's two feet here, four feet here, two feet here and two feet here.
Yeah, for, for events where we need the boat, for water events or for issues involving rescue or transportation of people, patients and other items, the boat that we currently have, we've run into logistical issues trying to cram people onto it and then be safe as well.
So the deal would be to have at least a stretcher place on whatever the replacement boat is that fits a stretcher. So it may not be, you know, a trauma boat or a medical boat, but you could at least transport somebody. I think, Paul, you've, you can, you can elaborate, but I think for the people have trouble treating people while they're underway, right?
So from real life experience, operating off this boat is, I can tell you, is that it's not designed to take care of patients across the bay. We've taken, put patients in Stokes baskets, which is the big plastic basket or wire basket, and basically crossed the bow, parallel, and brought them back in. That does not leave much room for us to take and monitor the patient, care for the patient. On the backside of the current Marine unit is, you could get them, barely get them down onto the floor, but now you're taken and trying to maneuver around yourself to take and treat and patient. It's just, it is a poor excuse for a rescue boat. It works great for everything else, but as far as having to take care of somebody, and I've been there, I've done that a number of times over the years, and it's a challenge and it's also a safety issue too, because now when you're working next to them, you're backed up against the side of the boat and basically life preserver on, there's just not much room to kneel in care for the patients. So I'm an advocate for that, you know, replacing that boat.
Let me tweak my question a little bit. I don't dispute that we need a new boat because of all the reasons you guys both just said. For the old boat, or what currently is the existing boat, do we need two boats? Or when we get the new boat, do we not need the old boat anymore because it's not a good rescue boat or other issues with it?
Let me throw my two cents in, okay? Boston's Island is, you know, looks for us for their, you know, fire protection, rescue operations and so forth. And basically is that if we've got any set out on the island, we need additional equipment, extra gear, SCBA, and basically trying to pack all that onto the current boat and gear and, and us to get out to the island, that's a, that's a stretch. But that they can have that boat, you can carry a lot of the gear, a couple people and be, do it safely. So I see that we could utilize this in a response. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of incidents out there, but who's to say what's next?
Yeah, and that, along with that question too, I know there's not a lot of dock space. So do we have, if we do keep the second boat, do we have space to put two boats on the town dock without kind of giving up valuable space down there?
Yeah, I, I think we, we could find space for it. It's a question of if the will of the council is to move towards a one encompassing crap boat or move on with two.
Yeah, two boats are a crazy idea and I'll tell you why. Okay, you're going to have two motors, one's going to be sitting down there, saltwater's going to get to it, it's going to be a maintenance headache and it's going to be a room issue. If we're going to do this, a little history of boats here, we've been fighting over boats long before Paul came in and, and the chief was here on what we're going to have for boats. Now I think we've got a good team, so by understanding, we've made progress because fire, rescue and police are trained in it where that didn't happen not that many years ago. So we're making progress. Let's invest, buy a boat that meets the needs of, of the police for their patrols, for the Harbor Master when he has to reset the moorings and everything, but also I will tell, like Paul said, if you want to be injured and we're coming across in a gale and you're strapped to the front of that boat and the waves are coming up on top of you, you're in for a ride. I think we can do a little better than that. I think we can come back, design the boat so we have adequate room in back. So let's go with one boat that fits the needs and do it right the first time, in my opinion. Thank you.
Justice Bradley, I see you're waiting patiently with your hand up on Zoom.
Yeah, thanks. I agree with Daryl.
Yeah, we, we actually, historically, when we, when we, Charlie Tetrow, our Marine Resource Officer, when we transitioned to the old Harbor Master boat, which is the one we're in now, we did that primarily because the former police boat was much smaller. So we went from, I think, an 18 or 20-foot center console to, I think, a 26-foot center console. And because we already had, essentially, we did the same thing. We had two boats, we sold the old police boat to get into this center console.
We need to do.
It was the better of the two options, sorry.
We need to, no, it's okay, thanks chief. I think we need to do a little thinking about format of that boat because you're going to need a pretty big center cabin or center console to get six feet or eight feet clear in the back, I think. You might want to look at some inventive layouts where we get, you know, similar, that boat's pretty good size, it's got a good carrying capacity, the deck layout is just, it's really useful for fishing and having access all around the outside, but not with the central kind of carrying location where you could put four people in gear or a stretcher and two medics or something like that. I think we also need to, sorry, go ahead, Dan. Well, just really quick, I think the likelihood of Charlie needing to be on patrol or some police force needing to use the boat while there's a medical incident going on, we're going to want the Harbor Master driving the boat who knows the location the best. We're only going to be probably running one emergency response boat at a time. It makes sense, I think, to have one, unless we get to the point where we have multiple trained, well-qualified operators, then, you know, maybe next time around in 10 years or something, it might be worth looking at that.
So it sounds like there's not a lot of opposition to the new boat. It sounds like that's a, you know, something we want to move forward with. It sounds like there's, we need to take a good hard look about, should we sell the, what will soon be the old boat?
Yeah, I see, yep.
Okay, any other questions for Article One Police?
Just one more.
Yeah, go for it. Hang on, Jake?
I'm sorry, is it me or do I have?
Let's go with Jake first and then we'll go ahead.
So we're proposing 350. I just want to point out the reserve balance is 338 and then we've got 700,000 of whatever. Is there like a, can you just speak to that really quick, Jessica?
I sure can. So last meeting, I came forth to you asking for a transfer of fund balance into these reserves to help get them to adequate levels for our immediate short-term needs and, you know, under five-year capital plan needs for, for all articles. And so that was kind of covered by that, I think. I don't have it right in front of me, but it was either 2 or 250 that I was asking to be transferred into the police reserve to cover this adequately and get us to that five-year mark.
250, you'll make it adequate for five years? Because if the reserve balance is.
To, to assist in getting us into that benchmark of the, between the five years, sorry, between the five year and the 20% of the 20-year plan, putting 250 in will kind of get us into that benchmark and hopefully we'll see a better return on interest and all of that will assist in helping it grow.
All right, Ed, you're up.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I'm going to flip a little bit. I didn't understand that the current boat was 26 feet. And if, if the intention is potentially to replace it with a bigger boat, then I guess I'd like to hear from Charlie that he can do everything he needs to do in some of our shallow and nor narrower waters with a boat that big. And if he can't, that may dictate keeping the smaller boat. But, you know, certainly I support the bigger boat, I just think you ought to weigh in, let Charlie weigh in on whether he needs a smaller boat for some of his, some of his functions.
Fair point.
Yeah, yeah, Charlie's been involved in this whole process since, since we started looking at it about three years ago. So he, and he's been researching the different companies that build purpose, purpose crafted boats for EMS police use.
And he, he was actually the one that I worked with in, I don't want to say spec-ing out, but in getting a good number for this. So he's very well aware of what we're asking for and coincided that with what his needs were to, to spec out the right stuff for the budget.
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we've been trying to nail down is whether you need two boats. And you keep coming back to, Charlie's been involved in the big boat idea and I get it and that's a great idea. I, I haven't heard anybody say that he doesn't need the small boat. If he, if he has said that, then ignore me, but if he hasn't said that specifically, which is what Dan got to and I thought, I mean, Daryl got to, and I thought that was a good, good point, I really think you ought to let him specifically weigh in on that because we have a lot of shallow water and a lot of narrow places that I know sometimes we have to go.
Yeah, well, we, those are good thoughts. And I, when we started this journey a few years ago, I told Charlie to bear in mind that it needed, we needed to spec something out that would be able to kind of be a Swiss Army knife of boats. We couldn't ignore the inlets and the, we needed something that wouldn't draw a lot of water, but yet could be functional for multi-purposes. So he's been, he's been putting a lot of time and effort into this.
Okay.
Check with him, mate.
It sounds like we've got a plan moving forward for this article. Ready to move on? I think, thank you, chief.
Anytime.
And I think now's a good time to pause our discussion of the capital program and go back to scholarship. Are you ready to talk about scholarship?
I already gave them the intro that I told you to be here. They were through everything before I told you to be here, so.
We, we were moving right along, so.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, it's not your fault at all. We're pleased that we're ahead of schedule for once, so, so we're kind of pausing, go back to item number.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out where you were.
Yeah, we hadn't moved on, but we're going back.
Okay.
Rather than make you sit through the entire capital program, which.
Thank you, thank you. It is interesting, but thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda this evening. I'm Stephanie Payne and I'm current president of the Board at the Freeport High School Scholarship Foundation. And I am with a gentleman that probably needs no introductions, but Fred Palmer, one of the founding board members.
Hi, I'm Fred Palmer and I want to show you my notes as compared to Stephanie's. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I worked with Stephanie and a large group of people on the Tri-Town Track and Field Project, which was completed a couple of years ago. It was a wonderful project for the town and incidentally, the town donated $100,000 to the project, which was one of the significant donations to help us reach our goal. John Patterson and I had the pleasure of leading that group and taking most of the credit, which we did not deserve, I might add, because it was a, truly a town-wide effort and it was a lot of fun to participate in. And in fact, we, John and I had so much fun that we figured after that project was over, what would we do next? And I had coached for six years over at Greeley High School, girls lacrosse, because my granddaughters played and I wanted to spend time with them. Unfortunately, I coached the JV and they all played on the varsity, so I didn't see all of them. But anyway, in that process, I saw any number of times that the girls who were graduating from school wanted to go to a certain college and they were disappointed when they figured out that they couldn't afford to do it. And so, and I saw this over and over again. So John and I decided we would research the idea and consider starting a scholarship foundation. And in our research, we had two really significant groups that we talked to. One was the Mitchell Foundation and the other was the USM Promise Foundation. The Mitchell Foundation was founded by George Mitchell and it funds every year two high school student, graduating seniors from the 180 high schools in Maine and funds them to the extent of $2,500 for four years. The USM project, I think, has between seven and eight million dollars and, and its purpose is to provide an opportunity for people who can't afford college. And in, there have been a number of new Americans who have participated and are participating in that program. The key element to both of those programs was the mentoring that they require their awardees to go through. And each student was assigned, assigned a mentor for the period that he and she was in school. And the graduation rate for both of these programs is well above the national graduation rate for people going to college. So we formed the, we formed a board of directors and Stephanie was one of the original board members and we decided that we would try and raise some money. And with Mr. Bradley's help, he had identified some funds in the town budget that when the RSU had been formed, those funds were not transferred over to the RSU, so they were here, although the income was going over to the school. The, the principal was still housed here at the town office. And so with the help of the town and with the help of the school board, we got our hands on the, we, I shouldn't say we got our hands on the money, we were assigned that money to manage. And by managing, we, we developed a program that Stephanie will go through. We're off and running and I must say that I had a wonderful time with the Track and Field Project because it brought the whole community together. But I'm really excited about this program because we can really have the opportunity to change people's lives. Stephanie?
Thank you. So we are a 501(c)(3) and we were established in 2021 to provide significant financial assistance to Freeport High School students for four-year, four-year college program. But in 2022, we added scholarships for vocational and trace school programs. We just felt like there was a need. And then shortly thereafter, the governor rolled out a plan to help with those kids, but realizing that there are lots of costs that happen around school that would not be covered, that was purely for tuition. So the process is easy to apply. The guidance counselors go around to all of the English classes. The guidance counselors go around to all of the English classes for all the juniors and seniors. And they talk about this scholarship foundation and the scholarships. And they, we're now, we're very excited. This year it's online, so we're really trying to minimize the barriers and get as many kids to apply. The process, when we look at students, they're selected based on need, academic achievement, community involvement, and promise. The centerpiece of the program is our mentorship. The money is important, but this is what makes our program special and effective. Each, each of our students is paired with a mentor at the beginning when they're selected. And that mentor meets with them, they need to, they agree to meet with them at least monthly. A lot of times it's a lot more. And obviously, it's via Zoom or however it happens once those kids head off to school or during COVID. And they meet with them monthly, and that happens throughout their secondary college experience or vocational experience. We believe that giving the gift of education and providing positive adult mentors to motivated young people can alter the course of their lives and create ripples of positive change throughout our community. Originally, the foundation had a goal of raising $1 million to fund four students up to $5,000 per year for four years. Our first year, we began our fundraising, and we decided to start with two students. Students applied and were selected by a group of board members, including Jen Gulco, board member and Freeport High School principal. We had 26 compelling applications, and we knew we needed to do more. We increased our goal to $2 million. Our plan, once the goal is reached, is to fund eight students annually, four students for four-year programs, four students for vocational or trade school programs. To date, we have approximately $1 million in cash and pledges from over 100 donors. To reach our goal, our development committee members continue to meet with major donor prospects and will solicit a broader group of donors through a mailed annual appeal. In both '21 and '22, we awarded two scholarships to students who plan to attend four-year college. For each of these students, we committed to provide the $5,000 per year for four years. Additionally, we have awarded one technical school scholarship to a student who wants to become a welder and will provide tuition, supplies, and other expenses not covered by tuition, the tuition-free plan. We are an all-volunteer organization. 100% of our board members donate annually. Our board is made up of 11 incredible community members who do everything from fundraising to volunteer recruitment to marketing to database management and financial reporting. We are a working board.
And now comes the pitch. Ever since my kids went to, to high school, I realized that the life cycle of a high school is every four years. And that makes time, if you want to do something, time is of the essence because the life cycle is so short. And the longer we wait to raise that extra million dollars, the longer we'll have to wait to increase the amount of funding we can provide for more students. So we're here to ask you for a commitment from your operating budget for this year and also to consider changing TIF language in existing TIFs or, or future TIFs to include the provision to allow for, I think it says, trade, trades in other schools.
Technical education, I don't think it's specifically limited to trade school, but technical and job training, technical education and job training.
Yep.
Trade school would probably qualify in most cases, we think.
That's it.
Is there a number you were asking for from the budget?
Well, we, you gave us $100,000 for the Track and Field Project, so we would like to request the same amount for this project.
I'm surprised. Is your hand up, or is that an old hand?
I have a question. It's an old hand, but I do have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
I take it that the scholarships are and should be available to students no matter where they reside in, in the RSU 5 district?
That's correct.
And have you expressed, or do you intend to express, extend an invitation to the other two communities in the district, RSU 5, to support the scholarship fund as well?
We have, we've already done that, and I don't think we've gotten an audience yet, have we?
No, what we have done is, we, we have been a little challenged connecting with those communities, but we have had notices about the scholarship foundation and being able to give or be a mentor or in both the Durham and Pownell newsletters or email blasts. And we're continuing to work, and we're trying to get some of the, some members of those communities to be on our board and to become mentors. So we're trying to include them and engage them. It is, has been challenging, but it is certainly our goal as we continue to raise this money is to get more engagement from those other communities.
I think, are you specifically asking, Ed, if it's the, the town committees, town councils or selectmen?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that, and I don't want to go back and hash out old, old eggs or whatever that means. But, you know, this is a tri-town community project, which I support fully. But I also think it's important, if it's going to go to kids in all these communities, that the leaders of the other two communities at least ought to hear the same kind of pitch we hear and ask, and, and be asked to participate in it, maybe not to the same extent, but to a significant extent, since it's going to benefit their kids as it should. I mean, if that sounds selfish and narrow-minded, then I apologize, but I feel that. And I think a lot of times, we do things in Freeport that benefit those other two communities, and to some extent, they ride our coattails. One of the communities is probably less affluent than, than we are. One of them is, is probably more affluent than we are on a per capita basis. It's a fair question to ask, and if, if they want to say no, well, then we know. But I think it would be an insult to them, to some extent, to leave them out of the direct request queue.
Good point.
That's an excellent point, and we will certainly pursue that because we had not talked about that.
No, we, we did it with Track and Field, but not this.
Can I ask one more question? The second part of your request was to change the TIF language?
Yeah.
If the money is available from the operating budget, do you really care where it comes from on our line item? Or was that just in order to help us to say, hey, if you can't find it here, maybe you can find it there?
Well, we originally came to talk to Peter about changing the TIF language. And then I think, Pete, you can speak better to this than I can, that Peter and Stephanie had a discussion about asking it out of the operating budget. We don't care where it comes from, as long as we get it.
I think the, the question is, it's a lot of work to amend the TIF language for a limited purpose. So if the council wants to, I want that to be on the table. It's an option. But it would limit the scope to technical training and job training, whereas your scholarships currently are geared towards everything up to four-year education. You could, you're either working on or you could be developing a technical training program, correct? But...
We have one right now, so we're, we're already giving, we're going, we haven't actually given, that we've committed to the first vocational. So there would definitely be ways to make sure that the money that came in, since we have that other money, that, that money was only for vocational training.
It could be done. It would just be restricted. So it's the pleasure of the council if that, if TIF funding is, I think the conversation started probably over a year ago, right? Fred, with you and John and I about, hey, how do we, all, all these other purposes for the TIF, how come none of the TIFs going forward have education, job training in them? It was discussed during the Concord-Gully Brook TIF, but it was not written into that document. And I guess the question also, we talked very briefly with Brett and with FDDC about should the, our TIF policy right now doesn't list technical and job training as one of the things that the town may include in new TIFs that we make. So I think at a bare minimum going forward, FDDC might be looking at that. I don't want to speak out of line, but making some recommendations to the council.
It's a change in the town policy about TIFs.
The town policy, right. So FDDC serves as our advisor on TIFs. They're supposed to make TIF recommendations to us. So I think they're going to look at that part and bat it around anyways. But we would have to make a hard decision to amend some of the existing TIFs if we ever want to use funding out of them for technical training purposes. So it's a little bit more complicated, but I think the conversation started from a good place, which was, hey, maybe people don't want to expend tax dollars. Could we look at TIFs as well?
So it sounds like, and this is exactly what it said, two asks. One is, can we put some money towards this use? The other is, can we think about TIFs through the future and change the policy? Okay. Council for near.
There's been a significant amount of money, you know, federally, and now the state's looking. Have you exhausted all those on the school budget? Is there anything that could, is possibly help you assist in your goal?
I'm not sure I follow what you're saying.
I think through the school budget.
What I'm saying is, the government has been giving a large amount of money during the pandemic and to address specific things. So I'm wondering if that might be an opportunity to, to help you reach your goal, number one. And now the state of Maine is looking to increase a similar program, which, you know, where the, the college is there. So I'm not sure, you know, if there's some other funds there.
We've looked at some, a bunch of private foundations, and the, the pandemic relief funds, we have not looked at. But we have, are making, or have made a request of the school board in their last year's budget, the last year that Becky Foley was here. And we, and she was, it was to come out of extra funds at the end of the year. And their attorney said that they could not do that. So I guess the short answer is, may, some. You know, we're always looking for ways to raise more money, and so.
Does the town currently give to any scholarships that benefit Freeport students?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, the, the high school gives out, and my numbers may be wrong, but the high school currently gives out, used to give out, about $100,000 a year in, to graduating students. But that comes out in, in $1,000, $1,500 increments, and there's nothing that follows that for subsequent years. And we felt that that's great, that the kids get the recognition and they get something. But what happens next year? And is it enough to push them in the direction that they may want to go in? You know, the, one of the, one of the scholarships is, each year is awarded to a junior. And the junior has that promise in hand as he or she goes forth to look at college opportunities. And that was a suggestion of Becky Foley, the former superintendent. And it's been wonderful because these, in these, in this case, it's two girls for the two years have just exploded in what they thought their, their options were. And one of the kids, a junior, two years ago, mentored with a doctor in town. She wanted to be a nurse. And so she spent the summer shadowing him. And when she came to apply, she ended up applying to Ohio State University in the nursing program. And now she was thinking about becoming a nurse practitioner and then perhaps going to medical school. So it's doing what it's supposed to.
And I just wanted to clarify that $100,000, that sort of, and I don't know if that's the amount. That's a variety of local groups. So the, if you've ever been to the, I don't know if they still, I don't think they still have it, but they had like a candlelight ceremony. And they would have, you know, Rotary would give $750, and I'm making this up. And another organization, the Lioness Club, you know, they all would give different things, and they were one-time scholarships. And frequently, honestly, what I remember when my kids were going through, they a lot of times went to the same kids. And they went to the kids who probably had parents who were saying, you should apply for this, you should apply for this. And one of the things that we've found so far with the kids who are applying for our scholarship are kids that don't necessarily have that support at home. They may be first generation. They may be single parent households. So we really feel like this scholarship is helping kids that can use that little boost up and not the kids that are going to go and get full packages from the college of their choice or have financial support through their own families.
Are there other towns that contribute to scholarship funds through their municipal budgets?
I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that, for example, Oxford Hills has a, a fund with $11 million in it. And, because a friend of mine runs it as a volunteer. And they give scholarships anywhere from $1,000 to $5,000 to 500 kids, I think. I think it's 500 kids in the, in the district. But they don't follow through on subsequent years. So again, it's the same issue of, I'm okay for this year, but what happens next year? Brunswick, I think, has a three or $4 million fund that they use in a similar way to, to South, to Oxford Hills. So I think ours is, is, is different. And it's, not only is it the highest amount that we've been able to find per year, but it's one of the few ones that covers four years.
That'd be an interesting thing to follow up on.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can certainly look, because I, we don't, I don't know, we don't know the answer to it. We haven't found any, Fred and John did an amazing amount of research when we were looking into this in different communities.
We didn't ask that question, though. But we will, we, we asked the school department for money last year, and we'll ask them for money this year.
You said their attorney said they can't do it. Is that a legal thing?
She couldn't do it out of existing funds.
There may be a way to budget for it or something? Okay. When you and the school department. Any other questions? Oh, Matt.
First, thank you for doing this. I think it's a great service to our community and to our students. Just a couple of questions. So do you, as the 501(c)(3), do you have ownership of the funds? And do you have a fund management policy that dictates how it's invested, what the return is going to be when you, when you authorize disbursements?
Yes. Bath Savings is our, is the institution that's managing our funds. And our investment policy is 60% equities and 40% fixed income. Our plan is to invest, to create a return of 7% per year and a payout of 4% per year so that the fund continues to grow. The 4% is working. The 7% isn't working these days, as you may well be aware. But we're confident that someday it will rebound.
And in terms of making commitments to students for the four years, is, is there any follow-up needed? I mean, do they have to maintain a certain GPA, stay actively enrolled with a minimum credit load? What are the, what's, what does that look like?
All of that. So we don't, and, and we sort of followed suit from, I think, at least the Mitchell Foundation and a couple others. We don't actually award the first payment, the $5,000, until January. So they have to successfully have completed that first semester, and they need to provide us with some. We don't require official transcripts because actually, that's what the Mitchell Foundation recommended not to do. But they do have to show that they are, have successfully completed it and are enrolled in the next year. And then the letter that goes with the money, and we pay the money directly to the school, not to the student. And the money that goes to, the letter that goes with the, the check indicates that the student has to be enrolled. And, and, you know, if that isn't the case, then they would send the money back. But we also, working with the mentor, you know, we sort of have a connection with that kid. So we know if there's, you know, somebody's having trouble with a class or, and we're not babysitting, but we have people who are plugged in and care. So I think that's really helpful, too.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? I'm assuming process-wise, we haven't even seen our operating budget yet, but it's something that you're still preparing. I'm looking at our finance director. You're still preparing. So, you know, if there are enough nodding heads, we could ask Jessica to, to put a line item in, and we can haggle over how much it is and all that, once we see the impact of the budget on the tax rates and things like that. What I'm, think I'm seeing on the council is that there's the will to look into this. It's a great idea. We should see if we could support it. We're not sure how much yet, but it, it seemed like it's worth asking Jessica to put something in the budget.
Right.
Is that a fair assessment?
Do we come back?
You can come back and, you know, advocate when it comes time, when we actually start fighting over what that number is and how big it is. Matt?
I'd actually appreciate a follow-up after you speak with Pownell and Durham.
And the school department.
Yeah, and whatever, whatever feedback you... Yeah, and whatever feedback you get from them would be helpful in us making a decision as well.
Okay.
Great. And I'm going to just put in one final plug before I say thank you. We are always looking for mentors. So if you or anyone you know wants to be a mentor, they can apply online. I also brought a few of our donor packets, which has a mentor application in it. And I'll leave those here. So if you're interested and want some more information, we also have a website. So you can go and look at that and all that information's here. So thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you both for what you're doing and for coming out tonight.
All right.
Great work.
Can you give to them?
Oh, the new.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'll grab your email before you go so that I can send you the application to submit your request for funds in the budget process. If you want to write it.
We have a new form we're using this year.
I'll just kind of formalize.
Actually, while you're doing that, I'll address this to council. We had a lot of people kind of coming to us, asking us for money here and there. So we said, let's come up with a form and saying, look, why don't you write down who you are, what you're asking for, who it's going to benefit, sort of simple questions that we used to ask all the time for social services organizations like FCS. But we didn't ask for other nonprofits. So now we're saying, let's take some of those questions, just ask it for everybody. So we have a list of all the people asking for money. We look at it once, when we do the operating budget, instead of trying to do it piecemeal.
We have a dedicated process. It's going to look really similar to the human service groups, like you said, that we've been using for 20 years. And they have to, each year, put their request in. And if we don't hear from them, they forward them a form. And if we don't hear back, then we assume they're either no longer in business or not interested in working with us. And then a couple of years later, we might hear from them again. And we'll do the same thing with any nonprofits that approach us, I think.
Okay. So I think now we're back to discussing our capital program, onto Article 2.
Yes, moving on. So Article 2, as mentioned, is the fire department. In this article, we are looking to purchase positive pressure fans with a request of 20,000. These allow us to remove smoke and odor with buildings. The, let's see, what am I reading here? So the, yeah, I'm going to let Paul speak to the majority of this as I'm reading it. But essentially, from what I can gather is that what we currently use, this version will allow us to use battery-operated fans, making them more portable versus kind of hooked up set structures. Hopefully, that will segue nicely for you.
Yeah, so looking to replace positive pressure fans that are run by electricity, running cords and stuff, probably were part of the first time Darryl was fire chief. You know, the equipment that we've got in place, so. But we're looking for is replacing those with high-pressure fans that run off in batteries. You know, the 20-amp batteries that basically rechargeable. We've already got a CAD-ray of some of the tools on it. And the nice thing about that is, is that we're not running off in gasoline, dealing with gas or electrical cords. And we're able to take them inside a lot better to take and help shift the smoke, remove smoke and gases and stuff from outside of that. So we're looking for two of those to place on the apparatus.
Are these compatible with the wireless jaws?
With the what?
Cordless jaws of life?
Yes.
Same.
Not the same battery, but same concept.
Don't be making fun of my old fans. So my question, a serious question, Chief.
Yes.
Is, on the electric fans, we have some very big structures in town that we bought those large electric fans. You going to keep those so they invent, because probably the CFM on the new electric fans are less?
Those basically will have real estate issues on the apparatus. But as far as, you know, keeping them, to have them available, I see no reason to dispose of them.
We bought them so we could vet our big commercials, so what you, okay.
How do the battery-powered ones compare to the corded ones that you were using previously?
Is the, we're looking at the portability of them as far as getting into the houses and stuff. If you give me a minute, I'll look at the spec sheet on one of the portable fans. Because I don't have it on top of my head.
I don't need an answer tonight. Maybe you can get it to me. Because I just want to make sure you have enough to do the job. I know we're going electric and everything, but sometimes it doesn't work. And the other question I've got is, you know, electric chainsaw kind of looks like you're looking at that. Now, I've used a couple electric chainsaws and I can tell you where you can put them, but that's another discussion for another day. But are they going to be ample enough to go through, you know, the roof material and metal roofs and stuff that?
We've already experienced, even with the bullet saw on a metal roof, it's not that great to take and gain that access with metal roof. There's some other techniques that we're looking at as far as, you know, gaining that access through metal roof. The battery-operated chainsaws are basically designed to go on to the two apparatus, the two engines. And the gas ones will be on the ladder. So ladders typically are functional as far as roof venting and so forth. So we've actually seen some departments using the battery-operated chainsaws and have had good luck with them.
Well, they work, I just.
Yeah, the other aspect of it is, is that, you know, if we had to go inside somewhere to take and deal with it, we're not dealing with, you know, carbon monoxide from the combustion of a regular standard chainsaw.
While you're up there, we call your attention to FY 2026 and a looming large purchase that will take up the bulk of the capital program that year. Ladder truck replacement. Welcome to the reality of new truck prices. I think this number may get adjusted upward before we get to FY 2026. So just something to keep in mind.
So one thing that I'll be asking then is, and we talked about this, Chief, is just to have the current apparatus looked at as a possible rehab. I think the ladder is in excellent shape. We have a question on the torque box. The torque box is what the ladder attaches to, that attaches to the frame. And typically, those are what fail, you know. So I think I'd like to see, you know, look at that option because we really need to, we need to have a good operating ladder truck, don't get me wrong. But there may be some other options to look at.
The one thing I will share with you is that the industry is basically expressing is that it is a two-year delivery date on the ladder truck. And when we talk about rescue, we'll be talking about the same thing. So there's, you know, so in a sense is, is that vote on it, prove it. And we go out, it's going to be two years before we see the delivery of that piece of apparatus. There's that much backlog going on in the industry.
So to get by the end of the year, fiscal year '26, you may, instead of appropriating for fiscal year '26, want to talk to us about having that vote in '25, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
With the understanding it doesn't get expended until the next year?
Yeah. So, you know, but I mean, there's financing packages, there's a lot of different things that, you know, potentially could be explored and stuff to get us into that timeline so that we're not looking at a fire apparat, is, you know, 32 years old by the time it's replaced. So there's just things. And we'll certainly take a look at options and evaluate, you know, the aspect of the refurb, what that might take, how long that would take, you know. So just to play into the discussion of it all, figure out what is the best course for our town.
What's the best description of the vehicle? High age, high gears, low miles, low hours?
Yeah.
For the ladder truck?
High years, low miles.
Low hours as well, or is it?
Yeah.
I think you have that listing on your 20-year plan that was given, that will tell you the mileage and hours for each of the apparatus units, for both police and fire rescue.
Other questions for fire, Article 2? Yeah, Darryl?
The brush trucks here are looking to replace the bed.
The bed.
Then you can take the pump and stuff and utilize that and.
We want to move the pump and the tank into what we call a skid pack so that basically we could pull that off during the winter and utilize the trucks a lot more effectively.
Give a little history. That original bed was a used bed out of public works. So that has more than done its service life. And we, actually, I wish if we did that too many years ago. And so we really got to use, I think, a skid tag to take that out. And not only gives you advantage, you're better uses of the truck during the winter, but also may save freeze-ups and costly pump repairs that you had to do a couple of years ago. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
And basically, an aluminum body and also cabinetry. Because right now, we've got no place to put your gear other than toss it up on the top of the rack and hope you don't lose it going down the road.
As long as you drive a reasonable speed, you won't be losing it. So just pass that along to the crew.
One other question, but it hasn't been requested. Well, I used to buy turnout gear to the capital budget. Why did that stop?
That is a great question, counselor. I don't have an answer for you on that because that was all prior to me taking over.
Yeah. What the theory was, the cost of gear, and it's probably, you know, and maybe that's something down the road we can look at. I'm not sure, is it, it's part of the operating budget now? And I want to, I'd like to get some more information on that because I'm not sure this is the right way we're doing it. Thank you.
That amounts a recurring amount every year, the same amount, correct?
The plan, yeah, the plan internally is there is a 10-year lifespan on the gear according to NFPA standards. And basically, Deputy Sylvain tries to take and maintain that. We've got more active guys that will go through a gear a lot quicker and basically reaches the point where we have to replace it. But we try to look at it, basically, every 10 years, cycle through. So somebody, so we're basically looking at about five, possibly six sets a year in cycling through to reach that point. And basically, some of the gear gets handed off to some of the new members that come on that are not structural interior firefighters, but are also would be operators. We can put them into a little bit older gear. Or actually, the gear lasts a lot longer because they're not crawling around on floors and stairs and dragging hose and climbing ladders. But it's just one of the standards that we've got to take and maintain and keep on top of it. And the other thing, too, is that's just hot off the presses that they've found, is that some of our fire gear is actually being manufactured with PFAS chemicals in it. So there's a new twist to the whole gamut that's starting to kind of reach out into mainstream fire service. So what's supposed to be where to protect you is now potentially could kill you.
Guessing the, having the turnout gear, if you're replacing the same amount for the same dollar value every year, or we budget the same amount every year, that wouldn't qualify as a capital expense because it's not a one-time, non-recurring expense by the definition, our definition of a capital item. So in theory, it shouldn't spike the budget by spending, you know, the same $40,000 or $10,000 or whatever it is every single year. It's like $8,000 or $10,000, I want to say. I could be wrong on that. That's in there every single year for the same recurring purchase. Yeah, yeah.
So nobody's saying we're not doing it, it's just which budget it comes out of?
Right, I think historically, it was in the capital plan because you were doing a larger bulk purchase for a greater number of officers or crew members, right, at one time. And it became, through the discussion, I'm going to assume, more cost-effective to have it on a rotation where you do whatever, five, six, seven outfits a year and keep it recurring versus, you know, a $50,000 to $80,000 appropriation every 10 years and have it all come do at once. This is a rotation which allows you to do what Chief was saying, which is, people that are in the capacity of driving, operating, can be in a, you know, a potential older unit than someone that's actually dragging the hose in the building or whatever. So it allows you those progressions.
I remember this was many years ago, but I think there was a 10-year replacement schedule and then there had to be periodic interim purchases as well for the people that Paul described who wear their gear out quicker. So the people that are on every single fire interior getting char marks all over their gear and having to wash it every other, you know, call, those are, you know, three, four-year lifecycle, right? So you would have like a big bulk purchase every 10 years and then try to figure out, well, this person only gets four years.
We need more, yeah.
Their gear and how are we going to replace, who's on a four-year schedule and all that kind of stuff? So three-year schedule, two-year schedule.
And the gear size is, we try to do is gear is sized to the person. And so that presents some challenges, stuff when we do bring on some new call personnel, you know. So their size and capacity is, you know, being able to function with the gear. So we kind of have to take that into account, too. So there's some other unique challenges that we face. It isn't one size fits all.
All right. If there's no other questions, I think Rescue is next, so don't go far.
Yeah, I was just going to have him stay and continue. He's doing great.
Okay. So it looks like we have two items in Rescue for FY '24, Rescue Replacement and AV Equipment.
So which one do you want to tackle first?
The big one.
All right. So Rescue is scheduled, is that we typically look to try to have about an eight-year lifespan on the Rescue and rotate them through. This year, Rescue number three is up for it. Mileage and hours and stuff are on that spreadsheet that Jessica mentioned. But the thing with the Rescuers these days is supply chain issue and microchip issue. And so basically, the price of ambulances have climbed astronomically over the last couple of years. So right now, budget-wise, we're looking at $400,000 to be allocated for replacement of Rescue three. That being said, is that we've actually got a bid that has gone out. We're looking for the response to the bids, the end of March. So we'll actually have a definitive number, you know, for the first, the first of April on what that will be. We sent it out to a variety of them. The challenge is chassis locations. And right now, the dealers are basically telling me we're looking at almost 20 months before we see the delivery of the ambulance. So that's going to put Rescue three as far as 11 years of service before it sees a replacement. And so that's the challenge. Trying to think that you could get online in senses early on and get a seat is, that's kind of wishy-washy in some senses as far as, you know, not putting money down, but putting your name on so that you're in line. So we may be exploring that option with whoever we select as the vendor for, you know, building the ambulance that we're specking out. The ambulance that we're specking is a Dodge Ram, similar to the Rescue five, which we purchased two years ago. That four-wheel drive, so just a few modifications on it, some things that we've learned using the ambulance over the last couple of years, cabinetry and design. But also, too, is that some design issues related around the Plimo vent, which is the diesel exhaust boot. So that's pretty much, you know, standard ambulance to our spec. So we've sent it out to three or four vendors. And they're all basically saying, thinking about 20 months. In some cases, some are saying 14. But, you know, again, some of, I learned is Ford's chassis, I think it's like a Ford 550, is basically sitting in a yard somewhere here in the country. But they've got about 80 of these vehicles sitting there and they can't use them because they can't get the microchip. And even if they get a microchip, then there's another chip issue for the windshield washers. So this whole purchasing is crazy. So that's kind of where we're at with the ambulance.
I've got two questions to start. One is probably more for Jessica. Can we buy or at least commit to the bid before July 1st? Or do we need to wait till July 1st before we say, yes, we're going to buy one? In other words, we don't have the capital budget, dollars approved yet.
Correct. The dollars definitely cannot be spent before July 1 with this plan. But.
Start the bid process.
Right, we, it's not uncommon to start the bid process prior to the appropriation being done so that as close to July 1 as we can get bids get awarded, probably that first meeting in July. I know at least one department head member in the audience, as well as maybe a couple more following suit to be ready for those, you know, awards to be actually done on that first July meeting so that they can start that ball rolling.
Thanks. And then the second question is, how many ambulances do we have? And how often are they all out at the same time? The underlying question there being, how do we know how many?
So we've got three ambulances. We try to staff two every. We try to staff two every day. Basically is the guarantee you is one truck goes out, the second call comes in. So we get a lot of the one-twosies that happen. The issue with the third truck is we rotate it through. But I got to tell you is that my feeling is, is that we keep the third truck rotated through so it gets exercised and utilized is that if we have a truck go down for service, we still have got an ambulance to fill that front, those four, front two and retain the revenue from the ambulance call then to give it off to mutual aid.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend going down. We've gone from four to three.
No, yeah.
With better conditioned vehicles, but I think three is as tight as I'd be, I'd almost recommend you go up before I recommend you go down in newer vehicles. So as long as they're well maintained, I think three can handle the volume here, but I would never go any lower than that.
No.
Duty-ready ambulances.
We used to, we used to run four ambulances and we.
Transfers.
And, you know, we're on almost, you know, transfers and stuff. And since we haven't been doing that, three would be, we, we really would be in a bad spot if we didn't have three.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Darryl?
Oh, on their side.
Yeah, I have questions. AV one too, yeah. Matt?
So are, this, I guess, this is more to Jessica, I guess. How are we, given the current state of the world, how are we, have you adjusted how we're looking at major equipment purchases, especially vehicles in the next five years? I mean, have we moved things up so that we can know that we won't take delivery of something, but it'll fall within the expected life that we need to have for our equipment?
Yes and no. We have certainly made some adjustments to the ask for equipments while you see some things moved into FY24 and other things we moved out. I'll be honest with you, it was my decision to leave the latter one replacement in 2026 versus Chief's ask of 2025. And for those purposes of trying to figure out funding and, and how to fit it in financially for the town, knowing that if, if the, if it's the will of council to move, that's probably going to be an item that I would suggest for bond, just given the nature of the value and life expectancy of the unit, as well as continued exploration of alternative options versus new. So that's why it's a yes and no for me. We have tried to adjust the crews. It's why we put two instead of one in 2024 ask and so.
Rescues have been increased in cost and frequency as well, knowing that we're going to take longer to get them.
Yeah.
Matt, do you have more or are you done?
No, I mean, it was mostly, I mean, I had no doubt that you've been thinking along those lines. It was more of just the transparency of it because I know sometimes we can sit here and say, well, have you thought about doing this and pushing this back? I mean, I think it's good for us to know the methodology of how you're approaching this so that we can have, we can just be better informed.
Sure, absolutely.
Darryl?
I'm not sure if we could do this, but I think you brought up a, a good point. We wait to the vote on, I think we approved the capital budget and the operating budgets Sometimes having your money approved earlier gives you better buyer power because what happens is there's going to be 15 people July 1 calling to order this stuff. There's going to be 15 people for the rescue. Can we, as a process, maybe take a look at going through where we are now and possibly approve the capital budget maybe May 1st or maybe.
So, so part of what gives us an advantage, I'll say, is that you actually adopt your five-year capital plan at the end of April. We have the public hearing the fourth and then the next council meeting is the adoption of the plan according to the charter, right? And once you have the adoption of that plan, it's not the physical appropriation, but you're kind of giving guidance to department heads that this is what we're going for. This is what we're kind of agreeing to unless something major comes up, you know, to, to alter those plans. It's, it's kind of like a, the one, the year one appropriation ends up happening under the adoption because we've gone through this five-year plan process with you. So I feel like we actually are in a potential better predicament that our department heads are able to start by the end of April asking for those, you know, bids and RFPs and, and what we need so that in that first meeting in July you can go, whereas a lot of municipalities, one either don't have reserves and two might have to wait until the adoption of the year one plan. And if they have, you know, best practice policies, they'll be going out to RFP in quotes at that time, which for a lot of them probably is not going to be until the end of June, you know, typically. And then they'll be, you know, I feel like we have a month to two advantage over our process because they are, with the review of the five-year plan, they are able to get the ball rolling so that July 1, they can ask for that funding.
Yeah, I have no problem issuing RFPs and even awarding them prior to July 1, just knowing that the check can't get cut until.
Correct. And we can't accept physical receipt and of the good, our service until after July 1.
Well, we can order prior to that, which I think is important.
Yeah, especially with these lag times.
Perfect, good.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Guys, okay if we move on?
Yep. Made some of those decisions mid-year with, with Nate's as well to pick up that additional one that we're not going to get even until what you've already appropriated here. So I think you've got an order in for one that we're not expecting prior to July 1. We're expecting it like six months into the next fiscal year for cruiser, but we pulled the trigger now, knowing that we have two that we can buy this year. And if one gets canceled or removed from this budget next year, then we'll cancel the order. We have no prepayment or anything like that.
Right, right. Good point, man. So can you sort of give us the really high level, short version of the AV equipment? Because it sounds like there's a couple of questions on that.
Yeah. What I'm looking for there is that our, our training is taken on different world. I mean, with Zoom, the labor force that we have is that it used to be able to get everybody in the room, you know, once a month and do classroom training and so forth with continuing ed for EMS licenses and for fire training is that putting in a large screen such as this in our meeting room with a camera, a laptop, speaker bar, couple whiteboards and basically record them so that they'd be available for staff to review later through our learning management system that we've got. So it's, you know, and we'd store those trainings. So, because there's some really good things that we can't really capture because we're just not set up for it. So we're just trying to design things to, to make that work.
I like the idea, lovely idea. I don't know that it needs to cost $30,000 for a big flat-screen TV and some AV equipment.
So, well, that was just a number that was just generated a year ago and it just carried forward as far as, you know, that certainly as time goes on, I'm working with Tom. Tom just sent me a Best Buy and just on, just over $1,000, it would be perfect screen and so forth. And I said, Tom, I can't buy it until, you know, this is a past. So, so basically we're looking for our options and economics of scale, but to, to move in that direction.
Yeah, yeah. Those are more the numbers I was thinking about, yeah. Darryl?
I think outside the box, a couple of meetings ago, we just approved a significant amount of money that was donated to Fire Rescue. We just approved another one tonight. So possibility of maybe taking, get a, get a tight number and maybe using some of that money to help offset this number, get that number down around $10,000 or something, I could swallow it a little easier.
I already got some plans on some of that donation money that I'll be reviewing with the manager and the finance director because people have been absolutely great and I just want to go on record thanking everybody for their generosity with that. But one of the comments that I got from a citizen the other day, they love the letter because I actually put in what we did and what we need, you know.
This would be a nice added to that letter if you could buy the whole thing.
I got no qualms looking at that and, and, you know, in senses, using donation money and go buy that Best Buy price tag and, you know, it's a start. But it's, you know, but granted, this was a benchmark to have a point to start and reference and to, to work with it. And Tom and I have been talking quite regularly about building this out, so.
Right.
Right, so future, future exploration needed and further discussion before that $30,000 is adopted from what I'm hearing that number probably needs adjustment or maybe there's other sources for the money that doesn't need to go in the capital, or the equipment that need to go into the capital this year.
Yeah. So.
Are there questions for Chief before we move on to Public Works? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks for sticking around tonight, joining us in our meeting. Article four. Public Works, we have three down, eight to go. It's 11 total, I think.
Two trucks. Take her out.
Sorry, I was just making a quick note.
Saving us $30,000.
Yeah, right. So we are moving on. Are you ready to take on?
We've got the forklift and the snow blower.
We'll start with the Public Works.
I'm just lying around saving $20,000.
Yep. Yep. All right, I'll let Earl discuss his truck needs.
We're asking for Truck Four to be replaced. As Mr. Darrell mentioned last year in the budget process of us using the bed off of one of our existing trucks, which is Truck Four. I'll start off with the good news, that saved $40,000. So coming in, the number that we're asking for is 235, I think. We started thinking outside the box a little bit and not only changing the bed, all the plow gear off of Truck Four, we put onto a new truck, the computer system inside it, the bed. And the only thing that we didn't try to rehab was the pump, the hydraulic pump, because they, any other company did not recommend doing that. So it has, the truck when I first got budget numbers was $285,000. So we got it down to 235.
So I'm sorry, on there, Earl, they, it's actually 250, so you're saying it's 235?
235, correct.
And there's a forklift and a snow blower as well?
The snow blower is, is, if somebody drove through town this morning, you noticed there was no snow lift, that would be that what that snow blower does. That's our giant snow blower that hooks to our loader. Unfortunately, it was, I guess I'm going to say one of the first built and it's built with gearboxers. We lost a gearbox last, I think it was last February, we got that gearbox three weeks ago. That's how long we waited for it. The new snow blowers are all hydraulic operated. It eliminates all that. It eliminates the abilical cord from the machine to the loader. It's all UBS connections now. So the new technology is wonderful. Our machine is just getting very old.
Do we have questions for Mr. Gibson? Darryl?
What does it save in store removal time? Because prior to buying the snow blower, you used to have to do everything with loaders.
Tonight, we, you are right, Mr. Darrell.
So it used to take how long?
Two nights. And, and if I can, just for a second, the, the guys have really been this last, what, three weeks, they've been working a lot of hours. So what we try to do is give them a break. They come in at midnight and from midnight to six o'clock in the morning, they clean this downtown, the way it was done today. Without that loader, that takes two nights.
Okay.
So you're working these guys from midnight to six and then if there's a vent shows up, they're already tired and then we're out again. So it, it saves a lot.
Other questions for Mr. Gibson? Pretty straightforward requests.
Snow blowers are pretty important, as many have learned recently.
Oh, yeah. It's a good time of year to be asking for money.
Yeah, we had that discussion, Peter.
Maybe there's some used, maybe parts can be scavenged from this one for, for neighbors up north.
You timed the weather well on that one. All right, seeing no questions. I don't see any hands up, so thank you, Mr. Gibson. That's helpful.
If I could really quickly, two, two things. One, I told you I was going to bring up the list of proposed changes in the articles. I got a little flabbergasted with some of the changes. So back to the ambulance article, there is actually an additional request of $16,000 to, this funding would be to install door access controls in public safety to help, and you'll have to forgive me, I was hoping to catch Paul before, but Peter's probably going to be able to speak to it a lot better than, than I can, but it basically will allow, it'll integrate with the existing door locks, right? But expand to like the dorm quarters and administrative areas.
So we did a review this year of public access to buildings, town buildings and what areas were, you know, behind doors, locked, things like that. And one of the things that happened is when they moved the living quarters for the fire station, they no longer have quick access in and out. You can, you have to lock a large number of doors with keys. A lot of the building have fobs, so all of our people have fobs for easy access, but they actually, for convenience, we'd be able to leave a lot more of the fire station open for the public and for the police department access and co-use if we were able to put in two, I think it's three, I think one is for the police side somewhere and then two doors in the fireside on either end of the living quarters so that they will quick access fobs so that they didn't have to, times when there's no one there, lock the entire, that entire wing of the building. So you could essentially lock the living quarters for employee safety, not just that, but also personal gear safety when everyone's out on a run. It's like, would be like leaving your house with your door unlocked. Otherwise, we'd have to lock the entire bill, we have to lock the entire building when there's nobody there. So this would allow, I think, better access and things like that. This ties into the existing keyless fob system that's in use on both sides of the building, but it would be essentially, I think, three access points. Is that correct, Nate and Paul? Three separate access points put into that keyless fob system, right?
Including installation and all that.
Yeah, it's hardware, it's doors, it's, two of the doors exist, I think, need to be converted to the keyless fob and we'll be adding one more door with a keyless fob, so.
Fire Rescue, one PD.
Yeah, this, this came up as we were developing the capital budget and Paul actually got quotes and he was doing his homework, but just started. It was a new item, so he started a lot later than the capital program.
Sounds like you had other changes as well?
Yep, so that one you'll see actually added to the article for the next meeting, but just wanted to give you the heads up. And then the second one isn't necessarily, it's, well, I shouldn't say, it's not a change. I'm asking if we can skip the solid waste article five and move to comprehensive town improvements and municipal facilities to kind of consolidate Earl's time at the podium and not have to sit through multiple articles that don't relate, if that's possible. If not, I'm fine going through it, article by article, too.
Okay. No, I think we could do that.
Okay.
Okay, so no other questions on Public Works or?
I have no other changes to Public Works.
Okay. So you're asking to skip to comprehensive town improvements, is that what you said?
Yeah, actually, I think for Earl's perspective, I would, I think we could jump right to municipal facilities. I think that's, because I think Adam will be able to do comprehensive.
I think next, next capital year, this may be just a suggestion from me at this point, but you should go backwards, start at our.
Oh, work backwards.
Or whatever it is and go backwards. So Nate has to stay the entire time because I know every year Nate gets to leave early. I appreciate you staying here for solidarity, but. Adam can get out first next year after getting article nine, seven and five or whatever.
So under municipal facilities, the three I'd like to start with are numbers six, seven and eight, which is the Public Works expansion project, the Public Works building repairs and the red light upgrade, which we're in year two of. I don't know if you want a brief summary of those from Earl, if, or if you just want to jump right into questions. The, the, to tell you quickly, the building repairs consist of replacing the chimney, installing CO sensors and converting what's a current air sprinkler system to a wet sprinkler system at the Public Works facility. The expansion project, I guess I'm just jumping right into the, jumping right into the explanation as it is, but the Public Works expansion is to expand what is currently the office and training break area. Currently, we are unable, Earl's unable to hold trainings within the facility because there's not enough space in the training area to fit everybody. As well as if staff, when staff visits the facility, no, I'm sorry, when the public visits the facility, there's no space for them to like actually come in and have a place to ask questions or where, there's no like seating space for them to, to reside while in the facility. So it would kind of allow for those two things to happen. Am I correct in, in that? So.
Darryl?
I'll let him handle questions.
Thank you. Just, just on training, I'm trying to, we, we just looked at the fire department that wants to upgrade the training room for current electrics, TVs and all that other things. Is it a possibility we could utilize existing training facilities and take your people and take them to a place and. to a place, and, and I'm trying to think outside the box here.
You could, Mr. Darrell, you, you know, now, the towns around us, it would have to be somebody like Brundrick or, or Yarmus or Falmus that, that had a meeting room that we would have to go to.
No, I, I'm saying, use the fire department training.
Yeah, that is a possibility.
I, I.
Or you could actually, you know, now that I think of it, you could use the town hall.
Possibility, but I'm, I'm just saying that if we invested a nice training facility to use for multiple departments, I don't know.
Yep. And, and the only other thing I'll say is my facility is, I think, some of you's been in it, our break room is at full capacity right now. You can't get nobody else in it. But doing trainings at the fire station or even here at Town Hall is certainly doable. No, it's doable.
With a really cramped operation, I don't know. I, I just.
I think, I'm just going to throw it there, and I mean, I haven't really had a chance to process and think about what you're doing, but things to consider would be the logistics of getting all of the Public Works staff to the public safety building, and, you know, if it's at a, if it's a before or after shift, and you're talking all the personal vehicles, you're talking about finding parking and, and safety in that regard, as well as, you know, building, I, I'm not sure a hundred percent on the access, but you're talking, we're talking access controls to get in, you got to have people there to, to allow that as well. And so, I, I just, I would want to think about that a little bit more. I'm not sure it will alleviate the request a hundred percent, because I think what I also hear Earl saying and what we've talked about is the expansion would allow for him to hold the training department wide there, but there's also a need to just outright expand that room, because from a break perspective, when the staff is in there having their break, there's no room for all of them to be there. So, I think you're going to incur this expense regardless of whether it's for training or, or break purpose, but it's not some, I'm not saying no, it's not something that we can't explore. I'm just saying, I'm not sure it's going, that would alleviate everything that we're trying to accomplish with this.
I just, sometimes we get in our own little silos.
Yeah, absolutely.
And sometimes I like to see us maybe share, if, if, and if it can work, it can, but let's just look at it and see if it's a possibility.
The only other thing I would mention is that the, the plan was the, the break room and the training area, but also the office area. Right now, when you walk in my building, there's a little hallway, and that's, you can't go anywhere else but that hallway. So, I can't remember, Mr. Darrell, you might know, nineteen ninety-three is when that was built?
Uh, yeah, it was before the station, so everyone moved down there.
Somewhere in that.
And you do need room in your office. I'm not going to argue at that point, but.
But now, you do bring up a good, a good point.
Instead of going through all, all the other items one by one, there's a handful here. If anybody has questions on any of them, feel free to, to shout out, and I'll kick things off with the gazebo bandstand item. So, that's just a placeholder for if we come up with something more significant than a platform, let's reserve a hundred thousand dollars to build something grander, if that's what we decide to do. No, it's a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The question was about the gazebo bandstand. Is the hundred thousand just a placeholder in case we?
Yes.
Because we're going to do a pilot program this summer as part of our downtown thing.
Yes.
Build a little platform, see how it works, and then if it works well, and we can deal with the train noise and all that, the idea was we may design something grander this fall, and this would allow us to have it built before next summer.
Exactly.
If it's a hundred thousand dollars or less.
Correct.
And if we don't need to build it, then we don't need to spend that money.
Correct.
Got it. Darrell?
And on the, the red light upgrade, I'm assuming that's going to be upgraded so it'll work with the emergency notifications when apparatus responds. Then all of them will be done.
Correct, just like the one at Charles, it'll, it'll be there. And I also would like to say, we're sort of asking for that money to re, re, rehab these cabinets, so that when the work's done on the bridges, that all the red lights will be tied together and, and synchronized.
Good, thank you.
And this is a three-year appropriation, so this is year two of that request. You'll, you'll see it again for next year.
Yeah. Council Danielle?
The computers fifteen for a hundred thousand dollars, is that, I understand that it includes server and firewalls, but it's almost seventy-five hundred dollars per computer?
No, 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 no. The servers are, would be the majority of that cost when we get to that point. But yes, it, we typically try to upgrade around fifteen computers every year based on the number that we have, and that's, they typically are between, around a four-year replacement schedule. Between three and five years is when I try to replace them. And then there's, uh, yes, and it, the primary bulk of that is for the server and firewall upgrades of the hundred thousand.
How much of the hundred thousand is server and firewall?
I would have to pull the quote again. I usually break it out on here, so I'm surprised I didn't. But I can get that for you next meeting.
My guess is a lot of the computer equipment is, can have a longer life because there's less requirements on the individual stations now, as more stuff migrates into the cloud. So, a laptop has lasted five years where it used to last three.
Correct. Yeah, I, that, that's not.
Six, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we're definitely, we definitely push it on some of them. Yeah, so, and the reason I'm kind of hesitant on the numbers is that logic, our IT provider had given us a large infrastructure refresh last year, and this is kind of like the phase, the phase two of that, because we told them we can't do all of that in year one. So, it's, and I think that's probably why I didn't have it broken out, is because it was a multi-year program that we're trying to meet all their infrastructure upgrades, so. But I can, I can get you more, more finite numbers for next meeting.
Have we ever looked at, like, a leasing program that just automatically does, like, a three-year refresh on everything and kind of takes that out of our hands? I mean, have you, have you just done a cost analysis on it?
Um, I have not personally done a cost analysis on it. I think prior to my being here, and when I say that, I mean, quite a few years before I was here, I think that they, they did have a program in place where they would, that, where they did that. And I think, I, I can definitely look at it again, I guess, short story.
I mean, I, I just bring it up because there's two schools of thought, right? You pay for the convenience of having someone help you manage that, and everything's automatic, you don't have to think about it. But it's, it's more costly than using your equipment for five, six years, pushing it a little bit longer. But there's also a time component to you or staff and an effort component. I, I just wonder where that, that sort of break even is.
Sure. I can, I can certainly look to do some kind of analysis on that.
And it, it's nothing to, I mean, you're busy this time of year, I, I get it, but I'm just wondering if, if it's something that we want to consider in the future.
Any other questions?
For the town wharf repair float replacement reserve, when you put something in reserve, does it still generate income and investment income, or are you, like, pulling that out of investments?
It does not get pulled out of investments.
Until we spend it.
Until we spend it, until, until we physically do a replacement. Good point.
We're going to have to hold on to it after we spend it.
Yeah.
Questions? Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Moving right along, I had to go back a couple of pages, right?
Back, sorry, yes.
Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about the revaluation process?
I can talk about the reserve. So, the, the assessor does the, does revaluations. In a lot of communities, what you find is every ten years or so, you have a large appropriation for a townwide revaluation to be done. What Freeport has done historically is small annual appropriations to fund a revaluation reserve, which allows the assessor annually to go out and select segments of the town to make sure that they're where they need to be from a valuation perspective. And it's a role, and I don't know all of this, but I'm assuming he has some sort of rolling plan of the districts and, and areas that he does, that he'll pick to do annually on a rotating basis to keep us near that hundred percent evaluation to maximize what we get from the state.
So, got something to add. I do know from discussing with the assessor that he is looking at commercial properties over the next year. He'll probably, well, he's probably going to recommend for us to go out for a complete commercial space, you know, commercial property revale because of they're out of, I won't say out of whack, but they, they're increasing and decreasing at a rate that is not consistent with residential properties. Residential properties have been skyrocketing, you know, and very hot for the past couple of years. So, he felt that he needed to go through, have somebody come in from outside. I think that would come out of that reserve fund for whatever that amount is, so that would be bringing in a specialist that does commercial property. We haven't had to do that, but, for a while, but the, right now.
But we have done it historically as well. I mean, that's what we use this fund for.
To get done within the next one to two years, he feels to keep, basically to keep us from being out of proportion in those, those valuations and from losing appeals.
Yeah.
As we get out of proportion, it's, they're challengeable, and rightfully so.
So, with municipalities that do a full-scale revaluation every ten years, they're going out to bid for a company to come in and do that, right?
Correct.
So, as we break it into pieces, are we, are we losing some, like, leverage to get a company to come in, you know, every year? Does that make sense?
No, because we're doing a lot of that in-house.
Yeah, we're able to do it in-house.
Traditionally been doing in-house.
Okay, so.
We're, we're going to, we'll bid out the commercial for sure.
But there's an additional cost to us each, each year? I guess I'm confused.
It varies from year to year, so sometimes there'll be more staffing needed for the years when they do bigger chunks of it. Different, we'll bring some people in.
Just like for this commercial revaluation, it allows for that flexibility to bring in additional help to, to complete the, that segment of revaluation. So, it's not.
Officer or field inspector for part-time, for a short period of time. It may be hiring it out, it may be getting quotes, all those things, but it's not always contracting it out.
Ready to move on to solid waste?
That's a good, that's a good question. That's something that we haven't talked about in several years, though.
Yeah, no, it's good to bring it back up.
All right. Article Five shows three items. The fourth has been moved out. So, we have analog scales being converted to digital, tires being filled with foam so they don't get flat, and combining electrical meters so the generator can power the whole thing instead of two different electrical meters and feeds. They seem pretty straightforward to me, but if there are any questions, now's a good time to ask. Yeah?
So, the digital versus analog, we currently have analog scales?
Correct. But I'll turn it over to Adam.
Correct.
Okay, so what, going digital, what's that, what's that going to do for us?
We can't get parts for analog. They're very difficult to get.
So, the system's outdated and, oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers, thank you.
If it helps, we, we, we put a lot of weight on that, on those scales. They pay for themselves, so. If that helps at all.
Doesn't. Thank you for talking.
For some levity, my friend.
We still don't want to spend it, but.
That's right.
For further levity, my friend Earl out there said, if you look outside, there's no snow outside, in reference to his snow plowing machine.
How much would just be new tires if we didn't fill these ones and they pop or something?
About the same amount of money per tire, right, Earl?
Yeah, it's the same amount, one, one. One of the, the reasons that that request is there is it's not so much the wheels popping as you get flat, you end up having a call of service truck out of Portland to come fix the tire. So, doing, and especially landfills, a lot of landfills will run solid tires or they'll run foam filled tires, either one. But to, to replace the tire versus filling it full of foam is going to be about the same. Correct, and then you're at their mercy to come, you know, because right now, I, I know y'all have heard this a lot, but the supply chain is broken right now. There's not a supply chain. And trying to get outside company to come fix a tire with a service truck, you, you're at their mercy. Yes, Darrell.
So, filling it full of foam is, will still cost five thousand bucks a tire?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
The petroleum, the rubber inside it, that's what costs so much, so it's five.
And that's going to probably, once we do that, though, what's the life expectancy, do you think, of that will be, probably?
Yeah, the old loader that, that used to be Public Works that they got rid of, it was foam, and it's, I don't remember, that was a nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-six case. Ninety-six.
And your tires lasted?
They last, they were still on it when it left.
Perfect, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions for Solid Works Recycling, Mr. Danielle?
Actually, can you fill it with foam after a tire pops? So, can you get like a hole in it and then fill it with? What's that?
You'd have to make the repair, then you would fill it.
Okay, so you can't just fill it with foam, and that equals the repair?
One of the other things I'd like to say on that is to fill the foam is going to take some time, because you have to take all four tires off, you have to lay them down, you have to fill them full of foam, and then they have to set for at least three days for the foam, the rubber in it to get hard. So, if you, if you had a repair, a hole in it, you wanted to fill the foam, they're going to charge us more to do one tire than they're going to do all four at one time.
How much does eight hundred cans of fix-a-flat cost?
All right. Any other questions on Article Five? Before we move on to Article Six, which is a big one. Article Six includes mallet drive, EV chargers, wayfinding signs, rehabilitating flying point road, and some concrete gully brook work.
We also have the addition of, this is, this is where we would be looking for the sewer, sewer district grant match as a TBD amount out of this.
We don't need anymore?
For one, as of today.
For one, yeah.
This one now.
Right.
There's other opportunities coming up by one.
Right, so it's a, it's a, to be determined under the five-year plan. I have zero for this year.
TBD, if something's identified before the capital plan's finalized, we should include it. If not, we should include it next year, but I think it should go in here just to identify.
That there's a potential in five years.
Even if we don't have a dollar amount, because.
Yeah, FY twenty-five or twenty-six.
Right.
Right.
Twenty-four.
Correct.
Well, it might not even be. The one we're looking at now might be, might have been three years out when the actual construction would have happened, that we would have had to have matched it. So, without knowing the parameter of the grant award and the expenditure in the match, we wouldn't know what year to put it in, but it should be on there.
So, it's just awareness.
If we're even thinking about that in the future, we should have it on here so that there's acknowledgement of it. That's what the plan is designed for.
And, so, so, but zero in, in FY twenty-four, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
We know there's nothing in twenty-four.
And is this where we're putting in money for the public safety planning, architecture needs assessment?
The, the police building, I have, that's, actually, that was in municipal facilities. So, maybe when we flip the page, we can just revisit that again.
So, we already dealt with municipal facilities, but how much did you, are you adding in there for?
So, the municipal, under municipal facilities, we had, for the planning of the police building options would be forty-five thousand to both the current year and the five years. So, it's, it impacts both because we're putting it into twenty twenty-four. So, there'd be a forty-five thousand, yep.
For planning and things.
For the police, planning of the, planning of a police building.
Yeah.
If we're going to plan, let's plan for public safety. Why are we only doing one?
Well, yeah, I mean, my assumption was that as we look at the police needs, if we build a new building, then, all right, now we've got some space planning to do for fire rescue, because there's a bunch of extra space in the building now.
If you're going to hire an architect and you're going to go out, you're better off to do a, a public safety study. You're going to get more for your buck, that will identify all the needs. And we may only want to do the police, but at least we would know. I, I think it, because they're so interconnected down there, I think we're, we're, we're unwise only to do it one side or the other.
Good point.
Doesn't your list of changes say public safety space?
It, it did.
Okay.
It's a question, when we, when we do that RFP.
It did, it was changed to police.
So, let's, before anyone gets too excited, when was it changed? Do you mean from up here just five seconds ago, or?
No.
Did you change it?
When, when we discussed last week, that's okay.
So, when we write the RFP, we can be, we can think about that.
So, you're asking me not to throw you under the bus? Okay, got it, sorry.
Me under the, no. I did, I did initially have it as listed for planning of a public safety, you know, changes, and. safety, you know, changes. And after discussion with, with Peter, it was more that we were, what was being discussed was more the removal of the police from the public safety building into some other type of interlinked facility, which would leave the current public safety building for fire rescue, which I, you know, I get, well, it kind of all still needs to be evaluated. But this kind of component was evaluating what town options were available for other expansion and sites for the police side.
And to be, to be immediately, or sorry, completely transparent, it's not the word, by disclosing everything that's on the table.
Sure.
PD is about 3,600 square feet for a police department in size minus mechanical rooms. So it's minuscule. We've been looking only from a, just a brainstorming staff perspective at sites that are either on the, ways to build either on the public safety property, the current public safety property, which would be ideal because you keep police and fire in the same, at the same business address. Maybe it's a separate building, but they could be connected, lean out the window and yell at the other one, some option like that. And we've also been looking at this property here because it's also close central, either of those locations for police facility. But we would then, I think, take into account the current police station and what's needed for the fire department. That may not be the long-term solution for fire, but it would take the off, the biggest thing that we've identified, talking with the fire department staff, is office space. They did a great job at converting the living quarters. There's great meeting space, kitchen apparatus bay. But the, in order to do all that, we've sacrificed office space for leadership and officers at the, at the fire department. So that would be a natural fit. I don't, we don't purport to be the experts, you know, police, fire, and my office and Jessica and how we organize that space. I think that's what the planning dollars in there are, just a high-level architect, architect looking at, hey, maybe we're missing something too for sites. And maybe those two sites aren't the best for police. But that's just so the public can hear. That's kind of what we're betting on.
Okay. Darryl?
I want to back up. On the EV charges, I thought the discussion we had that we're gonna try to get grants for that. So if we're trying to get grants, why do we get a $100,000 request?
So I, if you don't mind, I'll just interject. So it's on here because it's an appropriation that would need to be made by council regardless of the funding source. So if you look at the summary page of the proposed capital plan, that first page actually has, once we get to the point of appropriation, there's an expansion of where those funds are coming from. So some are listed under TIF, some are bonded, some are grant-funded, and some are reserve-funded. And that's where you'll see that breakout. But the plan itself is just at that plan level of what we need to do, not where, not necessarily where the funding is coming from.
Thank you. And there, the grants for some of those charges were just released and we're having some meetings with people next week, this week, maybe later this week. I think that's on my plate.
Take your word on it.
Maybe tomorrow, maybe even the day after, to talk about what those grant funding opportunities are and how we're gonna compete in those. So I don't think it's gonna cover the full $100,000, but it would maybe be a chunk of them right at them. You could just say yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just got an email from Melanie Sachs today with some stuff from Efficiency Maine.
Officially opened it today. Yeah, she sent that out.
Saying that, you know, a level two charger looks like it would cost about, up to $20,000 or so. A level three charger could be $100,000. And I think they were covering 90% of the-
Eighty.
Eighty for if we put it on a library or town hall municipal spot, and 80% if we put it somewhere else, something like that.
Yes.
No, no guarantee we'll get it, but that's what I saw.
We can compete. What's for you?
Back on municipal building repair at Public Works, why are we converting from a wet sprinkler system to, excuse me, from a dry system to a wet?
The, the second half of the building was never intended to be used as a heated space.
Correct.
So what they did is they went center of the building, as you know, and the left side is a wet system.
Right.
The right side is an air system, which they come out every year and fill it full of water to test it. Well, doing that has started to rust the inside of that pipe because it was never intended for that. So when they done their inspection this year, we found a section of the pipe that was literally clogged with rust particles in there. So the, I think it's Eastern Fire if I get that right. Their recommendation was now that you are running the other side of the building as a heated, is to make both of them the same so you don't have that problem. I think what they're also scared of, Mr. Daryl, is if it does go off, it could clog either side up with the rust particles. It was, it was, you didn't, I think you sent me that picture?
No.
It was a picture that was half full of, of rust.
Side of it? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're still on Article six. Other questions are fine, but are there any questions on Article six, which is mallet drive, chargers, wayfinding signs, and so on? I know I've got one, but mallet drive is my question. So I know we've been over this, but I'd like to just refresh. We had $1.7 million that we thought we'd spend in mallet drive. It looks like now we want to spend $450,000 in FY 24, followed by $750 in FY 25. And that would get us a reconstructed mallet drive with some traffic calming measures and a shared use path, not necessarily a grand redesign of the street. I see a thumbs up from Adam and a nod from Jessica. So I described that accurately.
Well, the shared use path is in FY 25.
FY 25, right. But after the street gets repaved and calmed.
You did, yes. You described that accurately.
And before the meeting, I mentioned to Adam, I, Complete Streets is meeting on Tuesday. I'd like to go and advocate for a grander redesign of mallet drive. I feel like this is sort of a special opportunity in making mallet drive really a downtown street rather than a connector street. And I think the best way to do that is to kind of, I don't want to say it has to be a boulevard with trees in the middle, but to really think about how we're using that street and think about how we get more stores, buildings, residences, you know, lining the street and not behind parking lots off the street. And I think that's going to require some work.
Yep.
So that's, that's my pitch that I make on Tuesday, which might require some more money.
Right. And I think that's what we've kind of envisioned all along, isn't it? I mean, at the Complete Streets is we want something bigger than just a repaved.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So much to be educating me and making sure that, that I, you know, that could be.
I think we came up with the, we'd like a boulevard.
Yeah.
So I will get there. We can get a flash.
Yeah, flashing's not working. Darryl?
I have a question on Flying Point Rehab. Going up pretty much from OMAAS landing up over the hill, up over Pet Gill, that's really tight on the right side for bicycles. You know, there's a lot of bike traffic there and stuff. Is this gonna help address that maybe to get a little bit wider or not?
Wasn't planning on it.
Not planning.
If we're talking about the same area, is that, the, the issue is there's a ledge that constrains the, the right-hand side outgoing from town. And there's a lot of groundwater that rides that ledge top.
Okay.
And it heaves the road bad. You, you must have noticed.
Oh, yeah. A lot better than it used to be, but yeah, but it still does, yeah.
So I'm hesitant to do anything on that side of the road with respect to, it needs further, to be further looked at, Darryl or Councilor Fornier. But with that ledge there and getting into ramming it, or I don't, I don't even want to talk about blasting. Forget I even said that word. But it's, it's difficult, as you can imagine.
It is difficult, although, you know, there's been several close calls there with bicycles and pedestrians and we're trying to encourage that. So, yeah, you got a big challenge, I know, question. But thank you for taking a look at that.
Sure.
Could we keep moving on? Any other questions on municipal town improvements? Brings us to Article seven, which is municipal facilities, which we've already done. So we can skip that and go to Article eight, which is cable, which has just two items in it for some equipment replacement and other improvements.
If, if I can jump to, back to municipal facility really quickly, there is an additional request for, to continue with our file digitization process. So there's a request to add 15,000 into the current year. And the net change to the five-year plan would be 30,000. So we'd be looking for 15,000 in 2024 and potentially another 15,000 in 2025. And this is due to, based on the RFP process we just did, they came and they, we, they've boxed everything up and we asked them to scan a couple boxes and give us an estimate based on the number of boxes we have, what they think the cost will be. And, and it's not quite to 15,000, but we know some of the boxes have bigger outprints than the two that they did. There was a good mix in the two that they did, but some of the boxes are all big plans. And Caroline's on, which is great because she might be able to allow for more insight into that if you have questions. But this is basically us hedging against that revised estimate that has come in to make sure we have enough to complete what we've started. And then the supplemental 15,000 for next year is to do some of the large maps and plans that we have down currently at FCS.
Okay. So the first 15,000 sort of-
Or subdivisions. I'm sorry, Caroline might be able to, yes. See, I knew I was gonna mix that up. It's actually for the subdivision plans that we have.
First 15,000 is sort of overage. It's a lot more than we thought. And the second 15,000 is just for some new-
To do new, yes, to expand the project, to include the subdivision plans.
So any questions on that or on Article eight for cable?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
On Article eight, what's the difference between the two? Because the last line says, the first one says reserve for maintenance and repair of the equipment, and the other one says to replace and repair equipment.
There, one is for our channel, the other one's for the school channel. Is that what you're thinking?
Channel 14.
Yes.
Channel three, channel 14.
Yeah, we typically have a much lower equipment replacement demand on channel 14. Channel three, we've got some big equipment replacements coming up. So we're running a lot more regular programming. We're using a lot heavier duty equipment, like what's being, what we're broadcasting on right now. And I think you've got some server replacements. Are you going to be depleting your existing appropriations? We're going for a slightly higher amount next year in the years to come. Channel 14 is a really low, we talked about this, you get maybe one or two pieces of equipment a year maybe from them?
Yes. They're running their own station. Their broadcast runs through us.
Could you use the microphone, sir?
Got me.
You don't use the microphone.
Don't, don't, don't touch it. Don't touch it.
They run their own station, but their broadcast runs through our facility. So we assist them with their, with their channel, but they're running the programming on it.
But much lighter user of equipment than we are.
Much less equipment than what we use for our broadcast. Correct.
Questions? Hats on the back. Kudos. Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
You gotta say, while Tom makes his once annual appearance, I know he's here every most Tuesday nights, but our integration of everything has been working very well for the past six months. I feel like we're, we're a lot more connected than even some of the other municipalities that I-
I was just gonna say that. You know, I'd say, oh, you gotta use your mic here, Peter. That not only for the last six months, for the last three years, I think I've watched a couple of their town council meetings because that's what I do as a hobby.
Struggle.
And, and they struggle, yeah. And the audio's not as good, the video's not as good. So, I mean, it's pretty flawless now. So thank you for that. And the rest of your career as well.
And the troupe.
Yeah. Yeah. Article nine, looks like a pretty easy one.
It does. I do have a quick change. Yep, a quick addition. This one I'm catching right out of the gate. So this is good. We're, we're progressing as the evening goes on. We're asking for an additional 40,000 based on some conversations that have been happening at the council level for the rewrite of ordinances. So this is, this is to-
For planning department.
Correct, which is, which is why Caroline's still there.
We have 40,000 already set aside for design.
Under ARPA, yes.
Design review. Okay. And this is another 40,000 for planning, additional planning stuff.
Correct.
Caroline, do you want to give some background on that?
Sure. This comes out of the vision charter and the request to have an outside party look at some of our permitting processes for potential streamlining. It probably relates, since we're gonna overhaul design review with the current 40,000, probably this would go towards both further amendments to site plan and subdivision. Happy to answer other questions.
Council Fornier?
Is that enough?
Is that enough?
I, I, are you requesting enough funds? What I really am, if you need more money, now is the time that we, we really should do a comprehensive look at that. So it's, you know, we've made some great progress. You are extremely busy in that office. So I want to make sure you have enough funding.
I think we do, Darryl. I reached out to a consultant that we have used to get a ballpark. I know that Gorham did a similar project for site plan. They went out, they did some comparisons to surrounding municipalities and got suggestions to streamline the permitting process. Gorham, my understanding, has budgeted 15,000. We would be further adding to that if we start digging into the subdivision ordinance, which we're already going to be doing some cleanup and potential changes if needed for LD 2003 and a legal review in preparation for that. All of those, the three things are going to be absorbed by current budgets, potential LD 2003 reimbursement if applicable when we see the details on that. So I do feel like we have enough money, Darryl. I think we built a good buffer into that. Again, we're gonna send out to overhaul design review. I think that would leave us a little wiggle room in case the work comes in a little bit higher for that. We could kind of straddle fiscal years, if that makes sense, to get the projects completed.
Excellent. Thank you. I just, I know you were brought up during the same time I were. We were always getting things very tight to the bone. So I just want to make sure.
I'm uncomfortable just even being here asking for money, Darryl. Thank you.
That's right. Exactly. Thank you, Caroline. Don't worry, you'll get yelled at tomorrow.
My only question on this one was, did we check or if not, can we check with the Conservation Commission? Because we heard a lot of people with a lot of opinions about the state of their trails. And I know they make their meager allotment go a pretty long way. But are there anything, any requests that they have to rehab any of the trails at Hedgehog Mountain or elsewhere that would require a significant ally?
Yeah. So I have, the Conservation Commission has handed in their budget for the operating budget. And I will say, part of that included, why am I drawing a blank on the name that they, the national, the people they bring in?
Oh, no, you're talking about the-
Yes.
I want to say work-study.
I, yes. And I'm drawing a blank on the name. I'm so sorry.
National parks.
Right.
Trail people that go out and they do the-
They're asking, they're asking like 40, I believe it's 40,000 for that.
$40,000 for having people come in and do trail work?
Yeah.
Okay.
CCC Civilian Conservation Corps?
Conservation Corps. Yeah, I believe that's, yeah.
CCC, different than CCP, which we probably don't-
So, so 40,000 in the operating budget?
Correct.
For people to come in and do trail work?
Correct.
Paying for people's time, which is why it's not capital.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Love to see more trail stuff done. Cool. All right.
And I think that that kind of reflects that there, Tom's gonna yell me about my microphone. It's probably just him. That reflects the kind of fact that that should be an ongoing annual expenditure, not, you know, once every 10 years you're doing trail work. It should be ramped up to the level where there's a continuous, there's enough work to go around. So I think that's good that I'm, I'm really happy that they submitted that request. I saw that come in today.
Okay. And I know Preport Conservation Trust has sort of extended an offer too if we want to leverage their resources or trail work. I don't know if that's in addition to or instead of the, the group that the Conservation Commission has identified. But it's a conversation that can be had. Either way, the money is probably going to be well spent.
So I'm just gonna rescind for a minute. Don't quote me on that 40,000 because I think I was reading down here on the ordinance work, the 40,000. They did put in a request reading down here on the ordinance work, the 40,000. They did put in a request for people to come in and do it. I don't believe it's at the $40,000 level.
Yeah, it's a town a little high.
Yeah.
But either way, it's not on our capital plan. We don't need to figure it out tonight. Okay. So that moves us on to Destination Tiff, Village Improvements, which is the one we used to pay for FEDC and a number of other things, including the other half of the snow blower. The rest of our town hall, oh, Phase 2 of the town hall park.
Yes.
Some sidewalk work. Phase 2 being more parking lot work, right? Or that part of this, instead of the front, it's the side. So questions on Destination Tiff? No?
I guess it shows a negative balance after like 24 projects.
Isn't that great? Yeah.
Problems?
Yeah, so that negative number derives from an analysis of what's been appropriated historically in addition to what we will be bringing in for property taxes. So it takes, it takes the audited balance, that 500, if you look down at the bottom of that article where it says Tiff funds available. So it takes the audited balance of 544,893 and it adds to it the property taxes that we raised for FY '23, so that 273,000. And it reduces it by the outstanding projects of 492, as well as the projects earmarked for 2024. So some of, that, that does not affect cash flow. That doesn't mean we'll go into a negative cash flow state. It just means that historically what's been appropriated and what we are trying to appropriate is more than what we're anticipating having brought in by the end of FY '23. Having said that, some of those prior appropriations are for like the sidewalk work. And so some of that may have been done at a cheaper rate and we just haven't put back into this reserve yet, that difference. And so I'm not overly concerned with that. It's just something I feel we need to watch, which is why it's there.
So does that, negative 138,531, does that account for any FY '24 property taxes?
No.
So there's probably a similar 273,000 or so that would come in.
Correct. Yep.
So the difference between those two is your cash flow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have 140,000-ish.
Yes.
In July of '24.
Correct.
Councilor Fornier?
On sidewalk improvements, is that brick sidewalks?
Park Street to Bow Street, I don't believe that one is. Do you happen to know that? I believe it's pavement.
So my question is, what's the difference? Maybe it doesn't affect this one, but I always had the question of constructing brick sidewalks, which tend to heave and are very slippery and stuff, as opposed to hot top. Top for tonight, maybe down the road. Is it a wiser and better use for hot top? And I, we had the whole brick sidewalk phase many, many years ago.
Right.
And it continues to cost us a lot of money.
Right.
I'd like to look at that down the road. That's probably a good job you had.
Yeah, I believe that was a design plan, you know, long before I arrived, which is why those are brick and remain brick. But yeah, I mean, the discussion can certainly be had whether they should-
It's a brick. This is a low-res picture.
Adam, is that brick in the park there where the trees were planted where my elm tree died?
Yes.
Yes.
It's brick.
It is brick, though. Just for me, I would like to see what that would cost if, you know, the rest of it's, I believe, the hot top that goes in by the monument, so.
We'll get you a firm number, but the difference is-
Thank you very much, because I, I think it's going to be eye-opening.
Oh, it is. No question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I think, I want to say that that's, isn't there a stretch for the, at the Hilton that's not brick, that's hot, that's painted asphalt?
I don't know.
I'll send Adam down there in the next snowstorm to check it out.
Maybe we'll plant your tree again.
Yeah, if you keep from killing it, maybe that'd be great.
All right. I think it seems like there's not a lot of questions left on Destination Tiff. And the next one, Conquer Gully Brook Tiff is another easy one because there's no capital purchases requested at this time for FY '24. Which brings us to the end of our capital program review with all our department, whoever the department heads is still around. But thank you to all of the others for sticking around as long as they did. Probably also worth noting, just for the record, that Council Bradley left us at some point between the last vote and where we are. So I think he has not been around for the bulk of this discussion, but I don't know what time he left, but just so we know for the record, he's not here. Senator Dennehy?
Jessica, are you comfortable with this level of spending? Because it's a significant increase over last year's?
Now, that's a slippery question.
She was nervous about, she was nervous about last year's spending.
I was, I was. You know, it's, to be honest, I, yes and no. I mean, obviously, anytime there's an increase in requests for funding, there's concern, especially when I continually come and talk to you and say that the funding of these programs, of these reserves, has dwindled, right? So there's obviously that concern. If this was 20 years ago and you were having this discussion, I'd be excited because I would know that we have almost 500,000 going into this plan annually that would accommodate for this type of growth, right? The difficulty that you will be faced with with these decisions is the next phase, which is what will the funding source be? And so where, where 20, you know, 20 years ago, the funding source was primarily under reserves, you're now going to start to see that shift out and it's going to be, a smaller portion will come from reserves, but we're either going to have to bond or we're going to have to be creative with some grants, which we are and we always have been. You know, we've always looked for grants when we can and/or, I'm drawing a blank on that third, last one. I forgot where I left off. But you're going to basically see additional funding options. I was going to say fund balance, which is essentially what I was asking for last meeting of that 2 million, right? Asking for 2 million to fund those projects. So that's, that's where the next phase of the heartburn and discussion will come, is, you know, in order to do all of this, what, where are we going to fund it from? Because even though this, this year can be funded by your reserves, you're not going to be able to fund five years of your reserve with this. You know what I mean? Like, that's, that's the threshold we're at. And I've been saying this for a number of years, that it's fine to have this level, but at some point, you're not, you're, we're going to be diminished, right, out of reserves. And, you know, if it was, if this year's appropriation was closer to last year's benchmark, right, of the 1.5 million instead of the 3.2, you'd, you'd probably be fine for a five-year plan, right? But you're doubling what you're asking for. And, and I'm not saying that's right, wrong, or indifferent. That's a choice, you know, and it's a choice that gets made. At some point, what I'm telling you is, there will be some form of a tax rate impact for these plans that we're looking to execute.
I think we started that conversation with fire truck, the word fire-
Yeah.
Ladder truck and bond, if that's where you go.
Yeah.
I think that's a very reasonable-
Right.
-point to start looking at it. And, I mean, you've got $400,000 in that reserve and you're expecting to spend over a million if you buy a new ladder truck in two years, or a year, or whenever, three years, whenever that is.
Right.
You don't have a million dollars just floating around that you can transfer into that fund to get us to a comfortable funding level.
Right. Whereas like 20 years ago, when you're funding it with 500,000 a year, you know, you could have it on the three-year plan and know that what you're funding is primarily going to go to that fire truck for an outright purchase. Whereas now, you, you don't have that. We've gotten lucky the last few years that revenues have fallen the way they have, and we've been able to ask for fund balance to be transferred in to continue with this. That's not always going to be the case. Like even the, I'll give you a little foresight. So the state revenue projections just came out and we were able to bump up our FY '23 budget to 1.15, I believe it is.
You mean FY '25?
No, our FY '23 state revenue-
Give us more money without.
Yeah, state revenue sharing is, I believe we're budgeting like 1.15 million. And for FY '24, it's going to be 1.2. So there's not, they're not projecting a lot of growth. And we typically use that as our benchmark for our budget, rightfully so, because they, it comes from them. So whereas like from the year before, that was, you know, we went from 300,000 to 500,000 to, you know, 1.5, 1.1, you know, so you're starting, even starting to see those gaps shrink up as well. So just, those are decisions and things that are going to have to be contemplated as we go through the budget seasons.
I don't know how other councillors feel, but my request would be, would you or other staff make a list of, here are some things that I would consider to cut from this, just preemptively? Like if you had to, here's the list and consult with the different department heads and say, if you really had to, where would you tighten your belt right now? Because I know we have a lot of projects that we are-
Yeah.
-looking towards for the downtown revisioning and saying, these are priorities. And so, I don't know, where are we going to cut? So it'd just be nice to like get those conversations going.
Yeah, so I think you're really, that, that's not as easy an amount of requests. I'll certainly, I'll certainly look to do whatever council wishes, but I would like to differentiate between the two, because I think there's been a shift, right, that these, these capital reserves, if you look at them, right, you have police, ambulance, fire, public works, capital improvements, municipal facilities. Those are all things that are town serviced functions, right? What's being added into the plan now are extrapolations of that, right? Like it's more visioning and ordinance. And so you're, you're talking about things that aren't, aren't, I guess I'll say existing, that we're, that we're looking to improve. Like this is a capital improvement plan. And though downtown visioning is a form of improvement, right, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead that. It's, it's a different, it's, it's an addition to the plan. It's, it's a new change versus maintaining and upgrading what's currently there. So you're kind of asking, I don't want to say you're asking to choose between the two, but I think that may be what's felt in discussions with department heads, because what they've been saving for in this plan is, is what they have for assets, right? And so if you ask them what they want to cut, it's, it's going to be what they haven't necessarily asked to have put in the plan. Does that make sense?
Totally. Maybe it'd be helpful to have the extra stuff pulled out so you can say, you know, the plan would continue to go many, many years with reserve funds if we just funded the traditional pieces and here's what's not. I guess I'm just looking for more information.
Okay.
The other thing, every year we're up here asking that very question. What would you like, what would you cut? And I think we're, we're at that point where there really isn't anything that they can cut, because last year they cut something, the year before they cut something, and now it's, you said it, when I first came on here, we started doing this. It was, at some point, you're going to be here.
Yeah.
Is it fair to characterize what we're doing this year as saying we were, you're recommending that we put, I think it was 1.9 million into reserves from the-
From the fund balance, yeah.
Fund balance. And, and that's the primary source of revenue of-
Right now for the capital plan, correct?
The capital plan. But we're going to spend 3.2 million. So we're putting 1.9 in, taking 3.2 out, and that's sort of your point, right? We're taking more out, and if we continue to do that, we'll draw it down.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think Jessica's point is running the money. Where, where the capital budget has got into this tool of funding stuff that really, I think she's right on the money, is not capital. So if we should stop stealing from that, and this is my pet peeve, and we had the discussion where we need to have that properly funded for capital expenditures of the departments we have in the town. The extra stuff we want, I'm not sure where we're going to find that, but, you know, it-
And that may be what we look for, those alternative funding sources, right? Like if, if the, some, and I use this as the example because it's the low hanging fruit for this year, right? But when you talk about the downtown visioning projects, they're in this plan and, rightfully so, because they meet the threshold of a capital purchase if we, if we were to decide as a town that that's what you're going to do. But the, the difference is, is that we now have to determine what that funding source is going to be. And, you know, just like with the EV charges, that they're in there for the 100,000, but we're going to hopefully apply for a grant and get somewhere, hopefully I'm hearing between 80 and 90% of that covered, right? So that's not going to be 100,000 out of your reserve. That's going to be maybe only 10,000 out of your reserve. So, or 20,000. So it's, that's my point, is that we're at that point where we need to see what the end funding source will be based on what you actually appropriate for funds. Or what you appropriate for the plan, I should say.
Can we approve something with the idea that it will only be coming from grant funding? So we could take that out of the, this is going to cost us a million dollars because we would only do it if it was granted?
Say that one more time. I'm sorry. I only, I didn't hear the very beginning of it.
EV charges is a perfect example.
Yeah.
Can we put it, can we, can we separate it out? So we're saying, we're not going to spend $100,000. We all know that. So we shouldn't take that as, we're going to lose $90,000, because we won't. We may spend $10,000.
Right.
But we've approved spending more if we get granted the money.
Yeah. So if what I'm hearing you say, what I can do is, I can extrapolate the first page, the summary page, to show the funding, potential funding sources for the existing plan, year one of the plan, anyway.
Yeah, it's not in the spreadsheet there.
Not yet.
Right. We typically only populate the funding source when we get to the point of appropriation. But what I think I hear you asking is, can I populate the funding source side of it now so you can see of this three-point, almost 3.3 million, how much of it would we be projecting is coming out of reserve?
Right. Because if we've got 1.9 going in, it's much more palatable if it's a 2.2 and we're only spending 300 extra thousand dollars versus 1.3, whatever.
And I think what I'm hearing is, the second part of your question is, if we approve the FY '24 plan, can there be some contingency that we're proving it, assuming we get these grants? If we don't get the grants, we want to pull that back and say, no, 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 don't spend $100,000 in EV charges if we didn't get the $90,000 grants. Like, is there a way to approve it conditionally?
Yeah, so essentially, essentially what happens is you would approve it. It would have to come back to you for, you know, award, right? And at that point, if, if at some point it's deemed the project doesn't get done, we would transfer that money back to reserve. And, and that, that happens automatically with all projects after a three-year. We give projects about a three-year outlook. Some are a little longer because they're kind of, I don't want to say recurring, but they happen every five years. So we typically tend to leave the small residual balance there versus doing all this movement of funds. But yeah, typically on like roadwork or whatever, we give a three-year period for the project to kind of start, be mid-work and complete. And, and then I'll talk with Earl and say, okay, is this project done? And we revert that money back to reserve to be reallocated for another project. So it doesn't just sit out there in infinity when you, when you earmark amount. It's only based off of what it actually costs.
Any other questions in the cabinet?
And we never spend more unless we come back and ask for more. So we don't overspend a project. And, you know, if we, if, if it's close, we would look to the operating budget and, and, you know, supplement to finish a project. But we don't, we wouldn't overspend a capital project and leave it in the negative. We would have to come back and ask for additional funding.
So, so when we approve this budget, it's just that, it's a budget. It's not, we're not appropriating, you're appropriating some of it, but not all of it.
In, in April, when you, when you, you're doing the actual adoption of this plan. You're agreeing that this plan is what you see for the vision, for the five-year vision of the town in these articles, right? And then you actually will appropriate the funds for year one in June. And so you have, we kind of have that period between April and June where we work out some of these funding sources to say what's going to be reserve, grant, bond.
And that's where, so June is when we say, yep, this is it.
Yes, pretty, pretty much. Yep. Yes, pretty, pretty much, yep. Yep.
Any other capital plan questions? I think we're done.
But I do wanna say, at any point that you choose not to do a project, that it, we pull it back.
Jessica, thank you.
Yeah.
For sticking around and for all the work that you did leading up to this. And I think you both, and all the departments, I think, put a lot of work into it. And I mentioned, we'll be talking about it more, so.
Absolutely.
Probably say that every time we bring it up. But thank you for all the work you did.
Absolutely. And any questions between now and the next meeting? Just shoot me an email or stop in and see me.
Thanks.
Yeah, right. Actually, I don't think next week you see me, because I think it's a council workshop. Yeah. So, you won't see me till the 21st. Thank you.
Oh, you have those, okay.
Yeah.
I can, I can buy some time and introduce it. All right, so we've got one more item, other business, before we have executive session. So, we need a new town manager. We will need a new town manager.
No.
Yeah. So, there's two pieces of it. The piece that we're about to discuss under other business is the search for a permanent replacement. So, there's interim replacement that we think we're gonna need for three, six months, maybe. And then there's the permanent replacement. So, the permanent replacement, it sounds like our intent was we wanna do an RFP, collect a bunch of search firms that might be able to help us. We have some thoughts on who we wanna use. So, Peter and Judy and the crew have started work on what might go into that RFP. I think that's what Peter has for us to start perusing tonight with the intention that, I'm guessing it might be our next meeting where we approve the RFP to go out.
Yeah, and I would suggest, this is the thing we wanna rush on in terms of getting in front of it, because this, nothing else happens until.
Right.
Well, assuming that you wanna hire somebody.
We do, yeah.
You don't wanna do it internally. That's a big assumption on my part, I know. But I think I can say that's probably what the council wants to hire a professional. This is gonna be your bottleneck for the next six months. Do you wanna take a look?
Sure.
Everybody else comes in, there's copies right there. So, this is, so we took three or four.
You mind stepping up to the microphone? You mind stepping up to the microphone?
Okay. By the way, after I told Tom to step up to the microphone, he texted me three times that my mic was off, so. Revenge. You got your revenge, sir. So, I don't.
Lost your train of thought.
You flustered me, it's totally out the window.
It's been a long day.
So, yeah, so, oh, yeah, we, we scalped liberally from, we wrote a lot of content. We also borrowed from, I would say, four local ones that have happened recently. We tried to consolidate it and make it somewhat of a condensed thing. Some, some towns and cities issue like 18-page RFPs. We tried to use some common language. There's a lot of question marks in here. We might just step through. I think the biggest single part is the number two. Number one is just kind of a description of the town, the background. Number two, scope of services sought is really what you're gonna wanna talk about, because that's what, that's what you're asking a consultant to do? Go ahead.
Oh, never mind. Go ahead.
Is it a different version, or?
No, I was looking at the wrong page.
So, you know, we're seeking qualified consultant or firm to provide direct assistance to the town council for recruitment and selection process. Okay, so the steps that I've included here, the biggest, the, the big one that's gonna kind of take the most time, slow you down, development of candidate profile and recruitment, recruitment, recruitment materials. Man, not great on my part. So, this is really the time that a consultant will come in. We're kind of looking at, I mean, this is really what, we want your feedback on these kind of steps. We're looking at having, suggesting public meetings. So, meeting with the council, maybe that could be public or non-public. Meeting with the department directors could be non-public, that could be a private meeting. Then a public meeting with just the public residents of the town. And usually what happens, you know, mini-visioning session, the consultant says, okay, what do you, what do you want in this position? What do you like? What are you, just, you know, what's all the bad stuff Pete did that you want something better? What's all the great stuff that Pete did? But it's gonna be, that's gonna be the overwhelming list that you wanna repeat in your next manager. But that, that helps them develop it. So, they, and they hear from you. You guys are obviously the most important, but they hear from the public, they hear from department heads. You could do other things. You could invite boards and committees in that can get unwieldy. You could limit the public participation to people being invited and develop a, really a job posting, right? Candidate profile, recruitment materials. I should, we should really look at the way that some of these people advertise these things, but I don't wanna put up a particular firm's website. Let me, let me go on here, and I'll show you. When you're looking, I'll walk you through what, what you see. So, our professional association is ICMA, the International City Managers Association. This is where people are gonna stumble across your advertisement, most likely. There are other places as well, but, so, Job Center here. So, let's see. Let's do just, of course, let's do all jobs. There you go. Let's, let's see how the first one is. City manager, of course, it's terrible. That's not a good one. They did a bad job. So, let's find one that has a professional recruitment firm. And the first one we come to, I'll use that. That way, I'm not favoring any particular firm or not. Town manager, Paradise, California. Here you go. So, this is somebody that's done a, looks like a pretty comprehensive job posting. Ideal candidate, position, talks about the town council, gives you benefits. This is, this is, looks like it's internal. So, it's like they're using their HR department to do that. So, that's a bad example. I'm not, I'm striking out here. I'll just be 30 seconds, and I'll find one that works good. Town administrator in Virginia. Here we go. Nope, the mayor of Scottsville is running that one, so that's not a good one either. You would think I would've done my homework on this and found a good one to look at. Done internally by the HR department. I'm, I'm.
So, maybe we should do this internally with our HR.
Yeah.
If you would like to fund an HR department, we can certainly.
All right, so.
Good point.
So, so, so here we go. Here, here's a good one. So, this is Dover, Massachusetts. They're, they're using a professional, wherever communityparadigm.com is. So, this is, you read this, you get interested, and you're like, oh, let's see. You click through to their, that is bizarre.
That's just about their firm.
Current opportunities. Here you go. Yep, so, looks like they're a Massachusetts firm. Maybe they would respond to your RFP. So, you're gonna see, Dover, Mass, that's where we're looking at. So, you'll click here. There you go. This is, this is perfect. This, these are recruitment materials that you would be seeking to have someone develop. It's a background, it's a pamphlet. Theirs is about five pages long. That's perfect. So, it lists a little bit about the town, some ongoing projects that are coming up, who the ideal candidate is. So, this is your candidate statement of who you're looking for, how to apply. You know, right here, you're gonna click on that website, and it'd be really difficult to find where you're supposed to go to apply, but that's what they're telling you to do. So, this is something, and these are usually done for most, I would say, high-functioning towns that aren't doing their own internal recruitment. It's just a one-pager. Just really quickly, I'll try to find another one, just to prove that I'm right and that I'm not, you know, just making this up as I go along, which it sounds like when I couldn't find any. Hold on.
Makes sense. If you can do two things while, at once, while you're searching, process-wise, do we need to vote on sending out an RFP? Or are we just saying, you know, we're just looking for approval to develop the RFP and send it out at some point in the next couple of weeks?
Well, I shouldn't be.
Do we need to bring it back? I know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I would issue this for recruitment for like, if we were hiring a high-level department, had like a finance director or a police chief, and Judy and I wanted to hire a headhunter or recruitment service to do it, I can do that. I don't wanna do that for my replacement. I want you guys to approve it. I'm throwing a draft at you, Judy, Jessica, a couple other people put this together with me. We're kind of throwing a draft. I don't know, maybe you should talk about the process you wanna use to finalize it, so.
Yeah, do we wanna bring this back up at our next meeting in two weeks to say, yeah, we all check off all the things? Just, just for the RFP, right? So, it's, we would still have five, six, whatever responses that we would then vote to say, this is the firm we wanna use and award the 10,000 or 20,000? But for the RFP, do you guys wanna see it again, finalize it, wordsmith it? Or do you wanna kind of give a few comments and say, yeah, you know, finish it up and send it out? Yeah.
If, if we, this is a pretty good draft, I think that, so, couldn't we send out RFP requests? Have them come back in? Then we would finalize that at that point, as opposed to, what I'm hearing now is maybe we're trying to finalize our process of how we're going through to get there?
That, that's the exact question I'm asking. Like, you know, we, we send out an RFP, we get proposals back, and then we evaluate all the proposals. So, the only question is, are we asking the right questions in the RFP? So, we get the right material?
I don't think this is ready to go.
Right.
But it's, it could be close. I think that, yeah, I mean, here's.
Yeah.
Here's, to do my second part, here's another one. Here's a, here's a.
But once we identify who we want to use, then we can add to that and, and massage it and, and go whatever. But I think that this material should give us a, I think what we're shooting for is a high-level company that does a good job.
Right. Here's, so here's the next one that I went down to that was run by a professional. So, it's a recruitment firm here, right in the middle, executive searches. Here you go. They do public sector stuff. So, they've got all of their, you know, everything from assistant police chief, community development director. So, city manager, here you go. You can, more info. Like, this is, you wanna be.
Yeah.
On someone who's recruiting, who has, this is a job description, candidate profile, apply, detailed description PDF. You want somebody to develop, here you go. So, Rio Vista, Rio Vista, California has this four-pager that gives brief on their community, the position, the ideal candidate, compensation, insurance levels, how to apply. So, like, that's, if you wanna catch somebody's eye. So, what I'm getting at is if you wanna go nationwide, which I think you should, only speaking from recent experience, the main-centered searches are pretty light right now for well-qualified candidates for a town like Freeport or higher. They're getting a lot of people from outside, and they're getting really competitive people from outside. Not to speak ill of any of my colleagues in the state, but not everyone's looking, and a lot of the really well-qualified people aren't looking. So, we're probably not in a position where you're gonna be poaching people from a larger community here in Maine. People are welcome to apply, but I think you need a broad-based approach where you're gonna be attracting people. I participated, this isn't a secret, I think it was reported. I participated in a process where I was happy that I was the local candidate, but I was also middle of the pack. There were some very well-qualified people that applied for the position with much more experience and heavier resumes than me. So.
Yeah, Tara?
So, if we took this document, you went online, and you got a couple samples of what we're looking for, cross off the companies that done it, and you send that out with the RFP, saying, folks, this is what we're looking for. We want a similar document here on a nationwide search, following the criteria. Then I think we may have a lot, something to work with.
I don't know that I would send out a sample, but I think what we're doing here is describing. We want a nice-looking document that covers these things, you know? So, we're describing what we want without saying, we want something that looks like this. But, yeah, that's disparaging. Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, because a lot of the work is really in, in talking to us, talking to department heads, talking to residents, to say, what are the words on the document? It's not so much the format of the document. So, I guess, but my question to you guys for tonight is, do you want me and John and Judy to massage this, get it ready for, for prime time, and send it out? Or would you like to kind of vote on the final version of the RFP on the 21st, which would be our next meeting?
We need to move quick.
Yeah.
And it's, and I have trust in you and John, and this is a great starting point. I don't think there's a lot more to be done here.
Yeah, this is not the controversial part, right?
We need to get going. This is, you know, talk to us, talk to residents, you know? Send us your credentials, tell us why you're the best firm in the world. And then when we get the proposals back is when we really need to. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? I know you did some work on this, too.
Yeah, no, I was literally was just gonna try to re-verbalize what you literally just said of like, I think the focus, or the ask tonight is, is there anything different you see in this scope of service that you would want added before? You know what I mean? But you just said that.
And also, not going, I mean, like, this is, you know, an 80%, 90% full bore approach. We're, we're not going, I wanna make sure we're not proposing to go beyond what the council wants, but I think that I'm hearing, do it. And we did a really brief comp on some of the results that other communities have gotten, and the, you know, the quick do-it-yourself internally or hire a small firm to do it for you, or just a single consultant, like 15, 20,000 versus 25, 30,000 for a major campaign. So, you're gonna save that money in a month of having my position vacant. You might as well spend it to get a qualified candidate, in my opinion. It's, that's the biggest, that's the cheapest money you can spend in the next six months to get a qualified candidate is broad. Go wide, plaster it, do flashy campaigns.
So, I'm voting, we do a reputable company with a national search. Get it done.
Yep.
And, and I, I trust you guys to come out and get it, get it here. Maybe you have the final version before it goes out. We'll look at it, and we can come in and talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In that way, we're not waiting for another meeting. I, we, I think Matt's right on the line.
We have six coming up in the next six weeks.
You know what? We can, we can probably work with you and John and staff to finalize it and put it in front of the council next Tuesday and send it out.